Good morning, everyone. Happy Merry Christmas. Excuse me. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors in order. Today is Thursday, December 15, 2016. This is the 225th anniversary of the Bill of Rights. Today is it's we are at 8:30 a.m. The Community Center Sierra Room. Can we have a roll call, please?
Good morning Supervisor Bowd- Supervisor Bagwell? Supervisor I'm sorry Bonkowski? Supervisor Shirk? Mayor Curl?
Here, thank you very much. All right. Is Mark here? Mark's here Salvation Army. Why don't we stand and have a moment of silence and think about Christmas and New Years and all things that are good and to think about others? Bruner, could we ask you to lead us in the pledge, please? Steve, come on up and lead us in the pledge.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to item number five, public comment. Good morning, Hope.
For the record, Hope Tingle spelled with a T. At the last meeting, I know it wasn't like you were calling me out, Mr. Mayor, about the fact that I did not know how many gallons of water this valley might be over allocated. I mean, it's not like Carson City was paying someone not to use their water or they were buying water from somebody else, but wait a minute, we are doing both. But I had a great conversation with Bruce Scott and which I found very enlightening, and I'm always seeking enlightenment, however, that's not what I want to talk about today. The open meeting law guarantees there is an opportunity for public comment at each meeting. Those entities subject to the open meeting law are required to set aside time and agenda items specifically for that purpose, which is what I'm doing now. The mistake people make is assuming the comments made during those periods actually have an impact on decisions being made. I've seen where public comment has made an impact. When the lovely ladies who used the pool in the morning came by and were concerned about the safety issues at the pool, the city and the board were quick to react. After all, there was surely a liability issue that would have to be dealt with in the future. Of course, after reading the paper the other day, I may be speaking too soon about this. The second time I have seen public comment make an impact was when the gentleman from the senior center came and voiced his concerns about the safety issues at the center. The city and the board were quick to react. After all, there surely would be a liability issue that would have to be dealt with at some point in time. The common thread in these two items was the issue of liability. Now we get to the public comment period at the last meeting related to the Vintage at Kings Canyon development and the two PUDs the board had been asked to approve. According to the Nevada appeal, 30 people gave public comment during the time set aside for that purpose. Of those 30, two people gave glowing comments about how great the development was going to be. If there were more people present who were for the development, they were disinclined to speak up publicly with their support. On the flip side, however, 28 people gave public comment either against the entire development as a whole or against the approval of the two PUDs which would allow the project to proceed as it conceptually designed. Several of the individuals who spoke against the development offered logical design alternatives that would not require the passing of the two PUDs. Others offered factual valid concerns related to the availability of healthcare professionals for an aging population. And as to that, rather than dealing with the Carson Tahoe Hospital about the shortage of primary care providers, perhaps a better source of information would be the Primary Care Office under the Division Department of Health and Human Services for the state of Nevada. But regardless of the well-thought-out, timely and logical public comments made, the board still approved the two PUDs. This vote served to illustrate how futile public comment is unless there is a pecuniary liability attached to it. But I am my mother's daughter, and Mr. Mayor, you will recall she was stubborn and persistent. So I won't let the fact that all you heard during the two-plus hours of public comment during the Vintage at Kings Canyon agenda item was blah, 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 de blah. But wait, Lori, here's what I have. So I won't let the fact that it appears that was all you heard stop me from coming before this board and speaking out about items of concern to me, my family, and my friends. My final public comments today, anyway, are I want to thank you Supervisor Shirk for your service on this board. It can't have been easy. I appreciate the open communications we have been able to share related to the many items that have come before this board. To Supervisor Bagwell, I would also like to thank you for your phone call on Monday, especially considering everything you had going on. I appreciate our two-way communications about the Vintage at Kings Canyon agenda item as well as the other items that have come before this body. To the members of the audience or gallery, whatever you want to be called, for listening to yet another one of my so-called rants, as one gentleman described them. To the city staff who might be here to receive recognition for the years of service, thank you for all your hard work. To Sheriff Furlong, wherever you are, I'm sure the young lady who was parked in front of the mailbox cluster a half a block from your house was grateful it was me and my dog rather than you passing by her as she was getting ready to light up her bong. Probably the same feeling the three teenagers had who were parked behind Lone Mountain Veterinary Hospital on the access road to the parasub station when Ranger and I walked by as they were snorting and smoking, whatever it was, they were snorting and smoking. I find it's always an adventure anymore wherever Ranger and I end up on our walks. So that's all for today, and I'm going to work so I can earn money to pay my water bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. And the reason I asked the questions on the water was I was, you know, interested in having a little dialogue because I didn't know the answer, so I'm just that's all.
I did not know the answer either.
And I figured your mother would beam down something to us to tell us what the true answer was.
Well, she probably knows where she is now, anyway.
All right, thanks, Hope, very much. Merry Christmas to you.
You too.
All right. Further public comment? Anybody? Yep? Good morning, Gianna.
Thanks, thanks. This is Marshall. This is Jim's grandson. So, okay. Okay, good morning. For the record, my name is Gianna Jaxx, formerly Gianna Shirk. And if you'll just indulge me for a few minutes, I just want to say a few things during public comment. I'm here this morning to congratulate my dad, Jim Shirk, for his four years of public service as your Ward Four Supervisor. I know it's not easy sitting in that seat, as any of those seats. Public office isn't easy. So it takes strong leadership and a lot of guts to put yourself up there. So Marshall and I wanted to commend you on your leadership and the way you served our community day after day, making it a better place for us to live. So at the end of the day, my dad is not just a supervisor. He is a father. He is a first-time grandfather. He is my husband's father-in-law. He is a brother. He's Michelle's husband. He is a friend and a best friend to many. And all your family and friends are so proud of you. One thing I know we can all agree on is that you learn a lot when you put yourself out there. I believe it's a great life experience, and not everyone has the guts to do it. And your friends and family want to wish you continued success on whatever happens after this. But what's most important is the experience you'll take away from this, Dad. It's the example you've set for your family as a leader with tons of passion in all that you do. And finally, I'd like to congratulate you on your last meeting and your last long agenda, your long hours, and your family is happy to have you back. And I'd also like to congratulate you on the most amazing grandchild. He is smart and strong and loves his family just like you. But this is not about us. This is about you, so we just wanted to say cheers and we love you. This is Marshall's first public appearance, so we just wanted to say have fun and enjoy your last meeting because you don't have to read those agendas anymore.
We okay, Rachel? All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? All right, I don't see any. Let's then move on to item number six, possible approval of the minutes of November 17. Anybody have a chance to read them? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of November 17, 2016, as presented.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Carried. On the agenda, the city manager advises that we're going to pull item number 14, that's the liquor ordinance. Item number 14 will be pulled at the request of the city manager. Any other changes?
No others.
And board members? Unless there's an objection, then we will take the agenda as posted with the deletion of item 14, the liquor ordinance. Could I now ask the board to come down in front with me and have some special presentations? We're going to present a five-year certificate of appreciation to an individual who is the business counselor for the Small Business Development Center, is a member of the Banking and Finance Committee of the Northern Nevada Development Authority, he's a board member of the Nevada Western Nevada Development District, he's a treasurer of the Capital Arts Capital City Arts Initiative, is an advisory board member of the Carson Community Foundation of Western Nevada, and he's a member of the Technical Skills Committee overseeing career and technical education for the high school, and we just had a meeting with them yesterday. So I'd like to ask Michael Saloga to come on up, please, for five years of great service. On behalf of a grateful community, Michael, thank you for your five years of service. In recognition of your service to your community, we'd like to have this certificate for five years. Thank you. Come on. All right, come on up here. All right. Next, we have a certificate of appreciation for a person who has served Carson City admirably for 10 years. And let me just read this before I say who it is. "The judges believe that we have the best court administrator in the state of Nevada." You hear that? "It was through her efforts that there was a successful consolidation of the administration of the district court and justice court, saving the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last 10 years. Her professionalism in dealing with the court staff, the city, and the citizens of Carson City is greatly appreciated, and that comes from all your judges over at the third branch of government." Please come on up and accept the congratulations of your community, your entire community. Max, come on. "On behalf of grateful community, please accept our congratulations and sincere appreciation for all that you do over there, and I know sometimes it doesn't get too easy over here, but that's we appreciate what you do, sort of 10 years. Thanks." All right. Ah, got a hug. Good. Come on up here.
We have staff members here, judges who would like to come up.
I have one more to do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hang on, hang on. I have one more. I have one more presentation to make this morning. This is for an individual who has served his community for four years as an elected official. I'd like to call up Supervisor Jim Shirk, please. Where are you? Jim, this is presented to you on behalf of Carson City Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Ward Four, January 7, 2013 to January 2, 2017, in recognition of your service and dedication to the residents of Carson City. On behalf of us at the board, please accept our thanks and your community as well.
Thank you, sir.
You want to say a few words?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All right. All right. Now we can get a picture. Come on up, everybody. Come on. Staff members want to get a picture up here? All right, we're now going to move to item number nine, Carson City Airport Authority matter. On this matter, as usual, since a member of the firm that I'm involved with and now retired from is counsel to the Airport Authority, it's a conflict of interest for me to participate in or vote on this matter, so I'm turning the gavel over to the mayor pro tempore. I'll leave in the dais.
Good morning, Steve. Are you going to take us through this item and outline what is before us today?
Yes, yes, I will. Steve Takeus, Airport Counsel. At our last Carson City Airport Authority meeting, on a vote five to two, the Airport Authority approved extensions to certain leases on the airport. There is a statute that states, well, first of all, there is a law that states that leases on the airport must also be approved by the Board of Supervisors, which is why you see me every time we have a lease matter. There is a statute that says that certain leases on the airport can be renewed or extended, and those leases are limited to aircraft storage-only leases. So what we have before you today are four leases that the Airport Authority and the city entered into in 1994, which are about roughly halfway through their course, and the tenants on those leases have asked that we extend the leases. We basically renew them for a new 50-year term, but beginning today. Well, beginning January 1st, actually, so I think it's the effective date. And the statute requires that before that can occur, we must obtain an appraisal. The Airport Authority engaged an appraiser. We chose Mr. William Kimmel, who's an MAI appraiser who is on the city's approved appraisers list, and we obtained an appraisal for the property because the statute says that the renewal of the leases must be based upon that appraisal. The appraisal came in at 12 cents a square foot. This appears to be the issue of contention, so I'm highlighting it for you. Came in at 12 cents a square foot. Those tenants are currently paying about 11 cents a square foot. They the leases were originally let out at seven and a half cents. That was the fair market rate back in 1994. There's a CPI adjustment clause on those leases that have brought them up to about 11 cents right now. When we received, when the Airport Authority received the appraisal, we candidly, we were expecting a higher number. We didn't do much with it because I think the thinking among at least the chairman was that for a penny a square foot, we're not going to extend a bunch of leases. That's a bunch of work to do for a penny. As a result, I sat down with the tenants at their request, and we negotiated basically a higher payment. And the negotiations, while I won't give you all the details because it did take several months, really, when we, when it was clear to the tenants that one cent was not enough, their response is, okay, what does the airport need? And this is a group of tenants who have been there for the airport whenever we need them, and they've been very good tenants, and we explained to them, we're currently in an airport terminal building renovation project, and candidly, we haven't budgeted money for that repair. It's over $100,000. And so their response is, well, how about we help you pay for that? And then we raise our rate to the appraised value, the fair market value. And that is the deal that was ultimately struck. That was the deal that was approved by the Airport Authority, and that's the deal that's in front of you. I mentioned the 11, the 12 cents appraisal because there was discussion at the Airport Authority meeting by at least one member who said, oh, wait a second. I've heard that Minden is leasing lots for 24 cents a square foot. Why are our lots only appraising at 12 cents? Something's got to be wrong here. You know, getting, we were hit cold with that allegation. I mean, I wasn't aware that they were leasing lots for a higher rate, but there's two responses to that. One is the lots are not comparable. And the other one is, when you appraise property, you don't look in adjacent communities. I mean, that age-old rule of real estate, which is not really a rule, but it's something people say all the time, what are the three most important aspects of a piece of real estate? It's location, location, location. That's because where the property is located has a great deal to do with its value. If you were trying to figure out how much your house was worth, you wouldn't compare the same-size house in San Francisco, or Reno, or Los Angeles, or some other city. What you do and what the appraisers do, because this is the requirement under the uniform standard rules of appraisal, is they look at comparable lots in the marketplace, which is where these lots are sold. And so at the time, I advised the Airport Authority, it's not appropriate to look at other airports. I mean, that's not the appraisal basis. We have a statute that says the rate is set on appraisal. It's not set on what somebody else thinks is going on at other airports. However...
Can we ask questions as we go?
Yeah.
Or Jim, you may.
Good morning, Steve. You mentioned you have to look at comparable lots, so all they're doing is looking at comparable lots around Carson City Airport, correct?
That's what the appraisal does, yes.
I do not see anything wrong with comparing an airport leasing to another airport within the kind of the proximity of another airport. I see no difference there. That's my opinion for whatever it's worth. So when you talked about Minden Airport and the rates there, we got an email yesterday you sent over this email from Minden Airport. Was that ever presented at the Airport Authority?
No, it was not, because that was what I was just about to say, but if you have additional questions, I'll answer your additional questions. Okay, so what I did is at the next, the next day is I checked with Minden to, A, find out whether they were leasing lots for 24 cents. The airport manager responded with an email, well, yeah, she responded saying, yeah, I'm renting them at 25 cents, and I'm renting a lot of them, but I also have lots that I'm running utilities to that will be available for 12 cents. I thought that was the end of the discussion. After, you know, after a bunch of other people questioning that, I called her back, and she said, oh, well, actually, I have three different kinds of lots. I have lots that you can build hangers on for 20 cents or 25 cents. The 12-cent lots are for utility easements. So if you wanted a lot to purchase or to lease so that you could do a utility project, example, they had somebody who came to them who wanted to run fiber optics to serve all the hangers, and so they were trying to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we lease to this, this particular kind of infrastructure business? And that's where the 12 cents came from. But you have to go a step further. So you can't simply say, okay, well, the appraiser said 12 cents here, and Minden is charging either 20 or 25 cents there. Those are comparable. So the next step is, okay, what do you get for your 20 cents or 25 cents in Minden? And the airport manager there, who's probably one of the most amazing airport managers I've ever met, is very competent, she said, okay, well, what we do is we pay and run the utilities to the lot line or to a point that's right next to the lot, and that's, that's rolled into the 20 cents or 25 cents. In addition, these leased lots that she is leasing down there are capable of using, of allowing any kind of aircraft use, including full-service fixed base operators. So if you want to run a aviation repair shop or one of the other aviation businesses on these lots, you're entitled to do that. Okay? The lots that we have at Carson City, those lots are strictly listed, limited to aircraft storage, and that's what the statute addresses too. I mean, if we, if we did have lots that said you could do whatever you want on them, you could not extend those or renew those under the statute that's being used here. And so when you compare those two, they're very different. In addition to that, on the utility issue, they roll the utility costs into the price of the rental price that they're using. What we did is we charged each of those tenants $12,000 per lot to be able to use our utility infrastructure. That was essentially their payment to us for having the utilities adjacent to their lot. And then, like any other development, in the same way it is in Minden, the developer, of course, has to run the utilities internal in their lot. And so the two, they're not in apples-to-apples comparison. And my concern is every time you try and do this and you get some kind, you know, somebody hears something and you start making the comparison, if you're not careful and you don't do your homework and look at it, you're not making an apples-to-apples comparison. And here, we can't do an apples-to-apples comparison because the lots are so different. Additionally, if you look at the appraisal, and I don't remember if I sent you a copy or not, but the appraisal that was done for us, the appraiser repeatedly states that the price that he's giving is because he's discounting it in part because it has such a limited use. If the lots were allowed to run an aviation business on, it would be a different story entirely. Now, the lots that we're looking at are largely within the interior triangular, triangular area of the airport. That's not an area that we would want to have aviation businesses in because it doesn't have easy access to the public. The lots that we've used for FBO, full-service FBOs, are all on the perimeter of the airport so that people and deliveries and things like that can easily get to and from them. So these lots are different. Now, I'm not an appraiser. I don't play one on TV. We went out and engaged an MAI appraiser. We got what we believe is a credible appraisal, and so we are going forward on that basis. Now, we're getting better than the appraised price from these tenants, and that should make you scratch your head a little bit because ordinarily, people don't pay more than fair market value for things. But these guys came to us and said, okay, look, how else can we help the airport? And they're helping us solve this other problem. And so we negotiated what that opportunity cost payment is. And the mechanics of doing that, because we want to wrap our fingers around it somehow, is we took a rate that we believed that we would have just gone forward with without any extra lump sum payment of 14 cents a square foot and said, look, if it had been 14 cents, that would be 2 cents more than what you're, what we're charging you right now. Look at 2 cents over 50... Look at 2 cents over 50 years, then calculate the net present value of that amount. You pay us that as a lump sum, basically as an opportunity cost. We are not tying that payment to the lease itself because if you tie it to the lease as prepaid rent, then you got to amortize it over the, the period of the lease and you can't spend it until it's earned, which is not a solution to us in terms of trying to balance our budget and, and pay for our renovation. And, and just so you know, the renovation is not something that we just thought, oh, let's make it look spiffier. The renovation is because the roof was leaking so badly that we had already cut off a third of the building because of the mold contamination, and it was now leaking into other portions of the building, including the portions where we store our AWAS equipment, our Automated Weather Observation System equipment, which we certainly can't afford to replace that. And so there was some urgency to doing this renovation, but that's where the money is going. And so that's pretty much what I have to present to you. Obviously, I'm willing to answer any, any other questions you have. But I would just repeat that the Airport Authority has approved this, and the request is that you approve the lease extensions as presented to you.
Steve, I have a question, and then I'll open it up to the board for further questions. I understand it's a process of the negotiation, but can you elaborate on the length of extension of the lease and how you arrived at that timeframe? I'm just looking at it in terms of, should the property appraised for more down the road? Are we boxing ourselves in?
The, the way we looked at it is the statute talks about renewing leases for aircraft storage only. And so the discussion that we had surrounded renewing a 50-year lease, but not at the end of the term, renewing it now. And that's how we got to the time period. There's been a suggestion by somebody, someplace, that we're limited to 50 years in airport leases. In fact, we are not. The statutes allow us to give up to a 99-year lease. Candidly, I haven't seen the, the case where that's been brought forward, where it justifies a 99-year lease, in large part because many of us view 99-year leases as almost a sale of the property. If you recall back in the late 70s, early 80s, I guess it was late 70s, when the city kind of developed the airport area, they did 99-year leases on those industrial lots that are just north of the airport. And I think after a few years, they decided, okay, this is essentially like selling it. Why don't we just sell them to these tenants and then collect the property tax and all the other things we need to do? And so, well, actually, that was what allowed them to collect property tax on the underlying land. Because if you're the city and you own the land and you're leasing it, you can't assess property tax on the land because you already own the land. And so I think that was one of the primary motivations for that change. But we haven't seen a reason for a 99-year lease here. But there's certainly nothing illegal or wrong about this. In fact, we're doing exactly what the statute envisioned, which is renewing a lease that is for aircraft storage only.
I have several questions for you, Steve. First is, do you know what the motivation for the extensions today is from the tenants? You said that the tenants, that the tenants approached the Airport Authority to extend the leases. Do you know why at this point in time? Is it because they recognize that possibly the, the current rates and value are still below what would be considered normal market? Or was it because they were aware that there was an issue with coming up with the money to pay for the terminal?
Yeah, I, I do, I do not know, but I can tell you that Lud Correa has been asking me for 10 years for us to consider this. And it's just never risen, risen to the top of the pot. You know, in retrospect, I wish we would have done it 10 years ago because I know the appraisals we were getting on the airport property 10 years ago were higher. I went back and looked, pulled all the appraisals I could find for the airport. And in the 26 years I've been involved with the Airport Authority, there's probably been a dozen appraisals, and I was able to at least pull up six of the last ones. And they jump all over the place, and a lot of it is driven by the timing, as you point out, Supervisor Bunkowski. You know, if, if the market rebounds, you know, we might have a completely different appraisal five years from now or 10 years from now. I would say that the offset to that is, it's a long-term lease and it has a CPI adjustment clause. And if history is any lesson to us, we executed a bunch of leases in 1994. We had a CPI clause. Looks like that tracked pretty well with the value because they were, they were paying 11 cents and the appraisal came in at 12. And so it seems to me that CPI clause, even though we all understand that the CPI clause is actually measuring consumer inflation, not real estate values, but over a long term, it looks like it's a pretty good surrogate for the increase in, in property values.
Typically, what we would see in long-term land leases is not only a mechanism for either CPI or other annual or biannual adjustments, but also a clause that allows the rate to be adjusted to market every five or 10 or 25 years, depending on the length of the lease. Has that been something that's been part of negotiations at the airport in negotiating these leases? And if not, is that something that, that's something that I'd like to see brought to the Airport Authority to consider going forward?
I think it's a good idea to bring back. I can tell you, I have a little bit of a sense as to why we haven't done that previously. Our philosophy at the Carson City Airport may be a little bit different than some other airports, but our philosophy is you lease a piece of land to somebody who's going to bring private money in and develop it. And you've got to give them a long enough period so that they can fully amortize their investment. And so that's why virtually all the leases we've done at Carson City have been 50-year leases. And that's also the reason why I say I haven't seen a 99, a need to amortize something over 99 years. What we've seen in practice, though, is the people who have invested those buildings have actually put a lot more money into it since they built the buildings to maintain them. If you visit any of the hangars that are in this group of hangars, they're immaculate. They, they, these guys have really maintained, they put the money in. And I think that their logic, and I'm speculating now, we would have to ask one of them, and actually, one of them is actually here, we could ask him. But I think their logic is, hey, we're putting a bunch of money in, we want to amortize those investments as well. But the request came 10 years ago. I, I didn't take it very seriously back then. And then they brought more and more, well, they brought it more frequently, and then it wasn't just Lud Correa who asked, it was starting to be some of these other tenants. And they were all in this 1994 batch of leases, which were some of the earlier leases on the airport.
So you bring, bring up a couple of good points about amortization. Because amortization for real property is 39 and 1/2 years. Also, in order to get construction financing or permanent financing on leased land, the lender's going to require a minimum of 25 years on the term. So I understand the need for longer terms. Do you know, Steve, if there are deed restrictions on these lots, restricting them to storage only?
No, that is a, it's not a deed restriction, it is a lease restriction. And the interpretation that we've gotten, the legal interpretation that we've received is that once you've leased it on that basis, there has to be extraordinary circumstances to be able to change the use. Otherwise, you're running a subterfuge on the statute that says, when you lease land, same as the city does, because we follow the same statute, you need to adopt a resolution specifying what the uses can be. And then when you lease it, you're leasing it on those uses. The argument that's been brought forth, the legal argument, is that if you later change that, now you've undercut what was out there fairly offered to everyone. And if somebody else knew that they could change the lease, you know, sometime after that, then they were disadvantaged. If they didn't know they could change it, they were disadvantaged. And so it's not a deed restriction, but it's probably just as strong as, would be my legal interpretation.
We could probably debate that. The, the way I look at it, with a deed restriction, it runs with the land, and it really, it would be almost impossible to change. Where the use restriction, to, in my mind, can become a political decision based on the makeup of the current Airport Authority. And you open up the leases to renegotiation if there's an assignment or an extension like we're looking at today. So those change in uses could be brought up during those negotiations. So it's just something to think about going forward. I think that the deed restriction is a much, much stronger mechanism to prevent a change of use because if the value of these lots and a long-term land lease is based on appraisal, which is in turn based, as you said, on the, the repeatedly, the, the appraiser repeatedly saying, this is a limited use, so therefore this is the value, as opposed to a much higher value because of a more broad use, then I think that that's another thing that we should look at at the Airport Authority level, is making sure that we put some real teeth into the inability to change that use.
That's a point well taken, and I'll take that back. I would note, the city owns the land, so we can't actually do a real deed restriction. And certainly, we can't restrict the land. I mean, you can, it's your land, but in the, that's, it's, it's just a little trickier when we aren't talking about private owners.
Right, but the Airport Authority can make a recommendation to the board to do that, and then we could look at it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. What happens to the terminal or the authority's ability to pay for the terminal if we don't approve these extensions today?
It's not good. I mean, I, I'm not going to sugarcoat it for you. The Airport Authority adopted a budget on May 31st for the fiscal year, July 1st of 2016 to June 30th of 2017. And for the first time in, in the history of the Airport Authority, to my knowledge, and I've been with the Airport Authority since the year after it was formed, the airport adopted a budget which was, in essence, a deficit budget. Now, you can't legally adopt a deficit budget. You can't adopt a budget where you spend more than what you take in. But they were advised by the CPA, and I think she's legally correct, that if you use part of your ending fund balance to offset this over expenditure that you have, that that makes it legal. And that's in fact what the Airport Authority did in May. And so we basically have, and then right after they did that, the next item on their agenda was to approve the renovation to the terminal, which, as I told you earlier, they didn't feel like they had a lot of flexibility. The roof was leaking, it had to happen. The CPA did jump up at that meeting and said, whoa, whoa, stop, guys. This is not in your budget. And one of the authority members said, well, what do we have to do to, well, you'll have to augment your budget, but you have this other problem where you, you don't have an ending fund balance that you can offset this with. And the, and then she advised them, you have up until the end of the fiscal year to augment your budget. And the response from that board member, who is no longer a member of the Airport Authority, was, well, then I guess we can worry about it later. Well, worrying about it later, when June 30 comes, if this problem isn't solved, I'll probably be back in front of you with some other proposal because obviously, we don't want to let the airport fall into a state where they can't pay their bills, where they're upside down. Now, they do have money in the bank. You know, this is, you know, part of, part of the illusion, and, and some of the people look at this, I think they don't understand it, even though the accountant has explained it several times. But there's money in the bank, but a bunch of that money in the bank hasn't been earned yet because it's prepaid rent. And it cannot be legally spent until it's earned, and you cannot borrow against it. And so there's money in the bank that can't be spent. So we do have a fiscal problem. That's one of the reasons that we threw it on the table with our negotiations on these lease extensions, is because when they ask, well, do you have a problem we can help you solve? They said, oh, yeah, we've got one, all right, you know, here it is. And so that's where that discussion came down. I, I, I mean, conceivably, some other solution could pop up between now and June 30th. I don't know what it is. Nothing else has been presented by any of the board members. I know that the current chairman worries about this a lot. Every time I talk to her about ongoing matters, she pretty much brings it up and said, what are we going to do? And so it's, it's weighing heavily on their minds, I'm sure.
Well, I read all the underlying leases, and I read the appraisal. And I would agree with you, Steve, that the lots that are in question are not comparable to the lots down at the Minden Airport because of the difference in allowable uses. I looked at the adjustments made by the appraiser, and I know Bill Kimmel very well, I work with him all the time, he's a very good appraiser, very qualified. The adjustments that he made in comparing the airport lots to industrial lots surrounding the airport, I cannot disagree with those adjustments. So the value that he places of $1.75 a foot on an annual basis, I, I don't disagree with that, that value. I think that the, that the issue that we're looking at here can be solved by the recommendations that I made earlier, which is putting more teeth into the ability to restrict the use on a permanent basis and putting language in leases, which I don't think we can do here, but on other leases, that would allow us to adjust the rate to market every 10 years. I think that those two items would solve the problem on land leases going forward. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at on this. I'm not happy with it, but I can't disagree with any of the methodology that was used. So that's, that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Lori, do you have any questions? Jim? Is there any public comment with regard to this issue? Thank you, Steve. Here we go.
My name is Phil Stotts. I am a member of the Airport Authority. I'm also president of the Carson Air Group Condominium Association that's located near these, these, these hangars that want the lease. As a matter of fact, I'd like to point out right now, I'm getting a little bit of grief from my members because they think it's a good deal, they want to jump on it. They want their lease extended too. But I think for the benefit of the airport in general, it's best not to go forward with this, and I'll explain why. First of all, I passed around the picture of my grandson because he's one year old. And if this lease is approved, he will be 51 years old. An entire generation will have gone by without the opportunity to be able to use those hangars. And if they were to, if this lease were to expire, he and all of the people of his generation, he'll be about 34 then, will be able to perhaps take advantage of this. The lease is too long. The Guidebook for Developing and Leasing Airport Authority, which Counselor Takis doesn't have much respect for, states that it's a good idea to have leases limited to only 30 to 35 years with subsequent extensions of five to 10 years after that period. That makes sense. That kind of keeps the whole thing fluid, and it allows for adjustments as time goes So that's, that's the problem with the lease thing. Now, in order to get this thing going, we have, Counselor Takis and these people have kind of created an element of fear about our fiscal problems. We don't really have that big a fiscal problem because, for one thing, last August, we got $70,000 back from the FAA. This has to do with, it's a refund of money that we paid out already for aerial mapping and realignment. Once the, once the airport was realigned, they had to remap it, and then we got 70 grand back. it, and then we got 70 grand back. And yesterday, we also got from the Nevada Department of Transportation, $15,227 from the Nevada Aviation Trust Fund. This was a, this came back to us for, let's see if I got, yeah, I don't have why they gave it back to us. And as far as the cash flow goes, we have done some things under the leadership of previous chairman. For instance, we've got a 46, that we've spent $46,000 for a pipeline to nowhere. This comes out of the area near the Hutter, Hutter complex, the Clickbond complex. The idea of it was to encourage people to come and develop the center triangle. And we thought if we led them toward water, they would drink. So far, that hasn't happened. But that $46,000 expenditure will not, not occur again. Now, our cash flow for the future should be looking pretty good, because we are not going to be making matching funds to the FAA for further development of the airport. Most of that development is already done. So, we're at a point now where our, our fiscal situation is turning around. And I think it's going to be looking pretty good. Now, I want to go on to the actual lease itself. It's, it's already been mentioned and questioned about the fact that there's no airport comps. I find that very strange. And Counselor Takeus indicated that it was inappropriate to basically use airport comps. I don't think it is. Once again, I'm going to refer to the Guidebook for Developing and Leasing Airport Property, which was paid for by the FAA. And it's, you know, it's, it's not binding. It's not binding. It's not regulatory. There's no statutes. But it's a pretty good idea to be following what it's saying. And this, and several times in here, you notice that when our lease is done, it should be done, there should be comps to other airport property. This is just common sense, just that they would do this. But this appraiser chose not to. But you were talking, we're talking about the, the business down in Minden. Okay, that's 24 cents, and, and it is possibly, you know, you could develop an FBO on there if you wanted to. The 12-cent square foot was thrown out. But that's for basically a utility easement. It doesn't have to do with building a hangar. So, the 12-cent thing, it's irrelevant. But not mention where other, comps to other airports. For instance, instead, they're renting, they're leasing out property for 25 cents a square foot, and Reno International. Now, you might look at Reno International and say, it's not a fair comparison. But, because they've got all this infrastructure, all these other fancy things. But it is a fair comparison, because they've set aside part of their airport for general aviation use only. And that general aviation use only property is leasing for 38 cents a square foot. That's a, that's a big difference. So, it seems to me, this ought to be at least 24 cents a square foot here, at Carson City Airport. And comparing industrial property off the airport, that doesn't take into account that we have $25 million worth of infrastructure improvement on the airport already. And this is a big deal. This is a great value. So, you're here talking about apples to oranges, and apples to apples, and oranges to oranges. Well, I don't see how the industrial dirt to the northeast of the airport compares at all to what we have on the airport. Just take a moment while I collect my wits, such as they are. There's also, I really don't see any compelling reason to extend this, these leases, because what we're doing, if we do that, we're essentially giving them a 72-year lease, starting from when they actually had the hangar and the property, to when it'll expire in 50 years. Once again, going back to the Guidebook for Good Practices, the FAA says that anytime you go over 50 years, it's considered selling the property. And if there are significant improvements on the airport, or if the FAA was involved in actually financing the property or providing the property, then, when you go over that 50-year mark, they can, and they have, made the airport authority, or the airport sponsor, as they call it, pay back, pay back the amount of that, the amount of that, the value of that, that property. That's something that we don't want to do. And going back to the comps, or the lack of comps for the evaluation, the appraisal, there is a great big hangar sitting right adjacent to all of these other properties, and it is leasing for 18 cents a square foot. That's the Gonzales Hangar. Now, Gonzales, how can we justify giving these guys what amounts to basically an infinite lease for 12 cents a square foot, when we got somebody right there paying 18 cents a square foot? Once again, this Guidebook recommends that keeping everything uniform to avoid future problems, future lawsuits, whatever. And also, since we're talking about other hangers, I'd like to point out that there are other people that are kind of hovering in their wings and wanting to jump on this if this is approved. One of them is my own Carson Air Group, and the other are the executive hangers, the group down below. They're very, very interested in what's going on in this, too. The Counselor Takeus mentioned that he considered the CPI increase to be a good surrogate for increase in value. He's dreaming. My hangar, I bought about 15 years ago. I paid $65,000 for it. It's now valued at about 150, 160,000. We have another hangar, other hangers, that are 2,500 square feet. They have little apartments built into them. They sold originally for $85,000. They're now valued close to $400,000. So, you can see, over this period of time, there is going to be a substantial increase in the value of these hangers. And it's not going to be just the CPI. It'll, it's huge. And I believe this is probably one of the driving forces between, trying to get this lease extended out further. Extending the lease also increases the value of the property, because obviously, you don't want to buy something and it's going to, you'll be kicked out of, you know, maybe five or six years later. But this is assuming that later on, let's say 50 years from now, or 33 years from now, the airport is just going to grab it, take it, and build something else there. I don't think that's going to happen, because the hangers have value. It, it should be possible to renegotiate the lease down the line toward the time when it expires. Finally, these are like aircraft storage. You hear that phrase quite a bit. But there's a lot more in, in these hangers than aircraft storage. Some of them are basically Taj Mahals masquerading as hangers. There, there's no real compelling need to help these people out by giving them a further extension. Several weeks ago, in front of one, I saw, this will make me sound like a populist or something like that, but, in one of these hangers, I saw an auto transportation trailer parked with four collector Rolls Royces on it. It's kind of hard, it doesn't exactly pull my heartstrings to know that these guys might be kicked out of there in 33 years, or have to renew their lease in 30 or 33 years, is what it should, should be. So, any questions?
From the board? Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Steve, would you like to come back up and, and discuss with us a little bit more about this?
Happy to. I would like to respond to a couple of things that Phil said. I don't have any disdain for that academic paper that he's distributed to you, but the bottom line is, that's an academic paper. That's a bunch of people saying, here's a bunch of other bright ideas you should consider. I think that's a great thing to have. I think we can all learn from that. But that's not the standard in the statute. It's not the standard that we use here. Secondly, when I look at that, I don't see them saying, set the rates based on lease rates in other communities. What I say, what I see them saying is, be educated, get as much information as you can. So, I don't really have an issue there. The other thing, too, is, is we do have lots on our airport that did appraise for more. Lots that are much more comparable to Minden, if you're going to make that comparison. Two years ago, we got an appraisal on the lot on the front of the airport. And I believe it came in at 26 cents, although I didn't pull the appraisal to look. But it was a number higher than the numbers that we saw in Minden, and certainly higher than 12 cents. But that was for a lot that has outside access to the road, has full ability to do all FBO activities, and it also can bring in their own utilities. They don't, they can take the utilities from the road. They don't have to take the utilities from the airport infrastructure. So, I, you know, it's like, if you're going to compare lots to lots, we could probably find some lots to compare that compare well. But these are not them. These are ones where we charge them for the infrastructure. They have a limited use. I'm not aware about the, the trailer of Mercedes, or of Rolls Royces. I've never seen them on our airport. I don't know if they were here temporarily or what. Hopefully, they're not here permanently, because that's not what the hangers are for. And then, the, the comparison to the industrial lots, as Supervisor Bonkowski, as you pointed out, the appraiser took that into consideration, that the industrial lots have multiple uses. In fact, any commercial use, or any permitted use under your current zoning, but pretty much anything you want to do. These lots are very restrictive. It's just for aircraft storage. And it's not about feeling sorry for these people. This is the right and fair thing to do. And it's also, even though Mr. Stotts has a different view of the financial situation that the airport's in, it's not about trying to find money to do the terminal renovation. This, this, I mean, that is a nice benefit to this, but this item should stand on its own two feet. Either it's fair to do, or it's not fair to do. And like I said, when we took the vote at the Airport Authority, five of seven believed that it was fair. Oh, one other thing, too, he mentioned that we don't have any FAA grants coming up. That's just simply not the case. He needs to take a look at the Airport Construction Improvement Plan that we filed with the FAA. We do have projects coming up. We have gates. We have, we have a lot of projects coming up. And unless they have money in the bank saved for matching funds, those projects won't happen. The matching deal is the best deal that, that I've ever seen anyplace. We come up with 6% of the money. The FAA contributes the other 94%. So, if we've got $60,000 in the bank, we can get $1 million worth of work done on the airport. And we've consistently done that over the last, oh, God, 50 years or so. And so, we do have grants coming up. And we are, if things don't turn around, we are in jeopardy of not being able to, to do the fun, get, accept the grant and do the work that we've projected to do.
Lori?
So, good morning, Steve. So, my, my question really goes to, do you see other leases that will be coming up to be negotiated? Because my concern is, with this particular lease, that all you've built in is the CPI. So, I actually agree with Brad and Phil that the length of this truly becomes a 72-year total lease for these tenants, and they're getting only a CPI. I don't, I don't like that component of this. I don't understand why there isn't a reappraisal every 10 years or something. And I'm concerned that if you get ready to do more leases, this is then going to lock you into that same type of negotiation. Do you see that as an issue?
I do. And we're always interested in new, new ideas to incorporate, and these are good ideas. Can we go back and recreate history? No, we can't do that. We've got what we have in front of us. This is certainly food for thought, and I'll bring it back to the Airport Authority to see if we can integrate those kinds of concepts. I can't, sitting here, I can't tell you whether people, whether tenants would agree to those terms or not. I mean, it's all a negotiation, and it may be one of those things where they say, yep, we can do that. It may be one of those things where they say, nope, sorry, that's a deal breaker. We'll just keep what we have. In terms of the, you know, calling it a 72-year lease, yeah, I think you could look at it that way. I would note, though, that some of these leases have already changed hands at least one time, and maybe more. You know, the original person who put in the investment and built the hangar back in 1994 is no longer around. One of these, which is the Tri-Motor lease, has changed three times. Each of the people that have been involved, unfortunately, have died, and their estates have sold it to somebody else who is in aviation. Each time, the new owner put new investment into the building. And that's one of the reasons why we look at this and we go, you know, these guys, these are, this is what we want to see. We want to see people who are tenants who are reinvesting into the building, not just hanging on to it for the rest of its life, and then giving us a somewhat disposable asset at the end. Now, at the end of the leases, we have the option, as the airport and the city, we have the option to either tell them, okay, we'll accept the hangar that's still there, or we can direct them to remove it and bring it back to, I guess, as broom clean is the slang term, but basically, bring it back to just bare dirt. And so, so there is, there is something at the end of, you know, there's kind of a light at the end of the tunnel. But if you don't have people that are reinvesting in it, what you'll have at the end of the 50 years is something you're probably going to want to tear down. So, I just ask you to take that into consideration when you're thinking about this period of time.
Well, and, and actually, if I could see that there was a trade for that, so often, when you do a negotiation, it might say, if you invest, pretend, 500,000, then the CPI can be acceptable. But we're unable up here to actually understand the investment that's made that's behind the lease. So, just maybe for future thought, again, that if you're not going to be adjusting it every 10 years or something, that there is investment criteria that says at least every 10 years. You know, in franchise agreements in business, that's what they do. You have to reinvest in the business or the equipment every 10 years and bring it up to date. So, maybe adding that into the leases, or things that we can see do consideration for the CPI adjustment. Thank you.
I love that idea. I wrote it down, and I underlined it, because I think that's a win-win solution, because then you've got everybody working the same end. Yeah.
I would like to hear from Tim, if you don't mind coming up. Tim?
While you're coming up, Tim, I do want to read a clause in the, in the Design Standard Handbook that we were just handed. Under 2.1.2 land leases, it says, "The value of a land lease is also dependent on permitted uses. The site for an FBO, for example, will likely have a greater value than the site for a privately owned aircraft storage hangar, because the revenue generation potential is typically much higher than on the site where the FBO activities are permitted." It also talks about the, the term of a land lease, typically ranging from 20 to 30 years, but the length of the lease term must consider the ability of the developer to fully amortize its investment in improvements over the length of the lease agreement. And as I mentioned earlier, that's typically 39 and a half years. So, Tim, my question to you is, how do you feel about giving lease extensions in the middle of a lease term? And can you give us your thoughts, too, on the terminal and the financial situation regarding the terminal and the Airport Authority?
Well, this has been a point of contention for about a year now, ever since the, we did find the black mold growing in the terminal, as to what to do with it. I gave the authority options. The option that was accepted was to renovate and replace the roof and mitigate the mold in the terminal. The authority approved an expenditure of $89,000, and I tried to make that clear, that this $89,000 was going to go higher because of the, you have to bring things to code. And if you touch it, you fix it. And now, the terminal expenditures have gone to about $103,000. I think that's about the limit now. So, but there was an increase. I think that's about the limit now, so, but there was an increase. It is complete now. I'm actually moving back into the terminal this week. The options I gave would have decreased those costs. However, we do know that in 2012, we did an expenditure for an aerial survey for the airport. The Airport Authority approved a $75,000 expenditure for that, and in September, we received a reimbursement for that for $70,000. That was something we hoped for, and it was something that was, was a good thing. We are aided also by the Nevada Aviation Trust Fund, where the state has supplied money for aerial, for rural airports, and, believe it or not, Carson City is considered a rural airport, which we're happy with. And a portion of our matching funds for the North Apron Reconstruction Project, we will get from the state, and that is $15,277, or $227. That brings our reimbursements up this fiscal year to $85,000 and change. So that, that's a big help. So we, financially, yes, we're, we're, we've got a very tight budget, and we, it was, it's tight because the matching funds for the North Apron project came in at $166,000, when you take into consideration another $100,000 for the renovation of the terminal, it makes things especially tight. So, because of these reimbursements that were not counted on in the budget, we actually are not in too bad of shape. Yeah, we're going to have to do some adjustments. There are some expenditures that have come up that are a little above our budget, but it's not something we can't handle. We are, we'll do whatever we can to keep from going into our reserve fund of the prepaid leases. And I think we probably can do that, because we're saving in other areas, and, you know, you move money around and make it work. So that's what we're trying to do. So, anything else?
Brad, I also wanted your thoughts on extending lease terms in the middle of the term?
I, I've got a, I agree with Supervisor Bagwell on that. You're looking at an extended lease in the middle of the term, which actually adds time to the length of the lease. And who's to say, you know, in 2006, things were really good in this state. Prices were high, leases were high. We're getting a lot of money. Well, things are starting to turn around now. In 10, 15 years, we might be back on top. At least, that's everyone's hope. And those lease rates will obviously be higher. So, I think that doing it, as Supervisor Bagwell and you sort of intimated, I think that perhaps this is something that we ought to think about. But that's my opinion. So, you know, that's, all I can do is offer an opinion.
That's all I asked for.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Any other questions of Tim? Thank you. Is there any other further public comment on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
Well, I'll, I'll make some comments first. I am split on this. I, I don't argue with the value of the appraisal. I think that it's accurate. My question, two questions really are, are we backed into a corner on this? Is there going to be financial harm done to the airport if we don't approve this because of the contributions? And what I'm hearing is that we can make this work if those contributions aren't accepted. My second question is, why now? Why extend the leases in the middle of the term? I understand the amortization part of it. I understand the added value part, but it seems to me that we are in a position where if we approve these leases today, that we're setting a precedent for other storage-only leases to reset at this rate and get a longer term, where if we turn them down today and wait for the market to improve, that we would be in a better negotiating position a few years from now on the appraised value, number one, and, and number two, it gives us a chance to also include some of the additional language that we've talked about to make the leases a little bit stronger. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of torn on this, but I think at the end of the day, that, you know, I would rather wait and let the market improve before we approve any additional term extensions.
So, just as a comment, the airport has another month, right? It could come back to us to see if some of the discussions that we've had today could be incorporated into these at the next meeting. So, I don't want to necessarily throw it all out, that we could give them an opportunity to come back at our next meeting and see if a few of the conditions can be added into these with negotiations. Does that make sense?
What Lori's referring to is that the appraisal is going to expire the day after our next meeting.
Right. Your next, it expires, I think, on July, on January 5th, or January 6th?
6th.
Yeah, it's, it's good for six months, and it was issued on July 5th, so, whatever.
So, could you, as the Airport Authority, go back to these lesses with some of the discussion points of the 10 years, or investments that are going to be made at integral parts to make us more comfortable with doing a midterm renewal? I mean, that, that's, I just, I just can't see this as a good option, locking the airport into 2066. I just don't see this as a good option without other trades in the lease.
Are you asking me to respond?
I'm just asking, do you think you can go back to them and get it back to us at the next meeting, or?
I can certainly go back to them with anything we can think of and see what happens, and certainly bring it back to you before the appraisal expires. Whether I bring back something that meets these criteria or not, I guess that remains to be seen, but if that's, if that's what you vote, that's probably what I'll be doing.
I'm just, I'm just not comfortable renewing these out, under these conditions, and so...
Steve, I would ask, based on Lori's comments, if you're comfortable with the direction from the discussion today, what exactly it is that we would be looking for as far as concessions from the tenants?
Yeah, I took, I took notes on, in fact, I think I would probably want to propose all of the different things you guys mentioned, and just see where we go.
So, if that's the case, and you're willing to go back to them, then I would move to table this until the next meeting.
Thank you. Hopefully, I will see you at the next meeting. All right.
All right, yes. We have a motion to table this, and we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. It's tabled.
Mr. Bruner, you going to take us through this, or you got Mr. Bugley with you?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be leading us through this. So, good morning, Mayor. Supervisors, for the record, Steve Bruner, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation, Open Space Department, and to my right is David Bugley, who is the President of the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. Before you is the proposed renewal of a lease agreement for the Wong and Nima House, for the Wong and Nima House between the City of Carson City and the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. First, I would just like to say thank you to the Foundation, because they're, they are a great partner to both the city as well as the department, the Parks Department, and encouraging... myself who volunteers on a board of a nonprofit has a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of that organization. Here, however, the foundation's purpose is only to benefit Parks and Recreation. Therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected under these circumstances. As such, this is not a disqualifying conflict, and I will be participating in this matter.
Any other disclosures? I don't hear any. Mr. Bruner, you going to take us through this, or you got Mr. Bugley with you?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be leading us through this. So, good morning, Mayor. Supervisors, for the record, Steve Bruner, Deputy Director, Parks and Recreation, Open Space Department, and to my right is David Bugley, who is the President of the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. Before you is the proposed renewal of a lease agreement for the Wong and Nima House, for the Wong and Nima House between the City of Carson City and the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. First, I would just like to say thank you to the foundation because they are a great partner to both the city as well as the Parks Department in encouraging the community to participate and donate to the Parks Department, as well as the operations of the facility as well. Currently, we're not structured, we're not set up to maintain the operations of the facility, so that's where the foundation really comes into play and really helps us out there. So essentially, currently, we have a lease, but what we're proposing is a restructure, or proposing that we change the renewal clause so that we don't have to bring the lease back before the board supervisors, and that it's an automatic renewal of the lease. So essentially, that's, I know that David had some questions about the lease as well.
David, go ahead.
Yes, I'm David Bugley, President of the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation. This lease had been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission in October, and subsequently, the Board of the Foundation approved the changes. The changes at that time were reflective of the automatic extension of the lease, which is fine. I received, when I woke up this morning, an email from Daria Worth indicating that there have been some subsequent changes asked by Mr. Bonkowski, and I'm just trying to figure, I'm just trying to incorporate them into my own understanding of this lease. So if you don't mind, I'm going to address this to Mr. Bonkowski.
Go.
In here, there is a change to...
You should probably address it to all of us.
Okay, to all of you, okay, but it was at the request of Mr. Bonkowski on Monday, I believe, through email chain I'm seeing here. There was a change, and one of them was to, I guess, paragraph eight at the end, and it says, "No assignment or sublease agreement shall exceed the existing term of lease, of leasee." And because our previous lease was a one-year lease, and now that that has been changed under paragraph one to say, to essentially say that the term of this lease begins January 1, 2017, will automatically renew for periods of one year at midnight on each anniversary date unless," and it goes on to say some other things. What is, then, what is considered the term of the lease? Is it to the end of the year, or is it the perpetual nature of the lease, that's the end of the term that's referred to in the new paragraph eight?
The change is just to, to answer your question, it would be to the end of the next or the current term, the end of that calendar year, unless it is automatically renewed, which only happens if one of the parties provides notice to terminate the lease. What this language does is prevents the ability to transfer, assign, or sublet the premises for, say, a two-year period or three-year period. So it only matches any sublease, assignment, or transfer to the same term that you would have on the property.
So if I were to, if we were to do a sublease, or to, like, for example, the dependency groups that they meet in there, and we have an agreement for them to meet, we can only specify it up until the end of the calendar year?
No, if you have somebody meeting in there, they're not subleasing the property.
They're not subleasing, okay.
Right, right. So what this does is it allows us, if we need to terminate the lease, we also need the ability to terminate any subleases that are underneath that. That's all this language does, is it allows us to terminate any subleases and make all of the terms concurrent.
Now, there are no intents on our part to have subleases, my understanding of what you're saying.
Right.
Okay, okay, fine. And then there was also a request by you to add this language to the end of paragraph 11, section A, section eight, and paragraph 11, section B, saying, "In those circumstances shall above set off exceed the actual rent paid by lessee under the terms of this agreement." It seems to make sense to me in the 11, at the end of 11B, although I'm not sure what a set off is, but, and that's more of a legal term than I understand.
Right, again, this is clarifying language, because you'll be paying a dollar a year for the lease.
Yes, yes.
But we have the ability to come in and repossess the property and lease it to somebody else.
Okay.
And then, the way the language was written, we're supposed to credit the rent from the subsequent lease towards your lease, but since you're only paying a dollar a year, if we leased it for $1,000 a month, we're then obligated to credit that back towards your lease. And so all I'm saying here is that it won't exceed the amount of rent that you've actually paid. So the credit back, that set off, will never exceed the actual rent paid by you.
Okay. Now, that's fine on section 11B. I'm just questioning, now, there's a new section, there's a new subsection eight or something under 11A8, and it says...
That was deleted, that's a mistake. It should be under 11B and 11C. That number eight was stricken. So you have a, there was another version that came out after the one that you have.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Right, so, so I'm hoping this is good language, because I'm not, I'm not an expert on contracts.
In my opinion, it doesn't change the terms of the lease, it's only clarifying language.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record, that I wasn't quite sure what was happening here, especially getting these things sent to me at 8:00 in the morning.
That's okay, all right. Any other questions? Is the counterparty here today? Can we just say that, do they agree to this? Steve?
He's the president.
I'm president of the association.
Of the association.
Of the foundation, I mean.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Any other questions? Public comment? I don't see any. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the renewal of the lease between the city and the Foundation for Carson City Parks and Recreation, Inc., for the use of the Wong and Nima House with the updated language presented today, and to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement on behalf of Carson City.
Motion, and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's take up purchasing contracts, 11A. This is to consider possible action on contract number 1617-084, Safe Drinking Water Act, analytical services to Europhens Eaton Analytical, for total not to amount, not to exceed $195,643 over three calendar years to be funded from the water fund. Who's doing this? Ms. Tadman? Go.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, board members.
Morning.
David Riquetta, Public Works for the Record. So what this is, is this is a contract under our, you know, drinking water rules, Safe Drinking Water Act. We need to provide testing, you know, throughout the years. We've been working with Europhens, well, since I came on board five years ago. In 2014, we did a contract with them for two years, and we're proposing to do an additional three years with them. We also do testing with other laboratories, that's a question that had been asked, and we do testing, there's laboratories up in Reno. There's currently not any laboratories here in Carson City that have to be certified to do this testing, but there are laboratories in Reno's that we do testing with. And when we look at this, we really look at the broad spectrum, and it's kind of an economy as a scale. Europhens is, if not the largest, one of the largest drinking water laboratory testing in the U.S., and they're located down in California. So just from an economy as a scale standpoint, they provide great value in what they can provide to us. The laboratories in Reno are great laboratories, but they have to outsource a lot of their testing because it's expensive, there's not a lot of that testing available. So there's an additional cost associated with that. And so by doing that, in 2014, we took a look at the comparative costs using Europhens versus the other ones, and on an annual basis, an estimated number of tests was about $75,000, $80,000 that year, and we had a savings anywhere between $25,000 up to another $70,000 if we were to outsource that same testing to the other laboratories. So there's good value in doing this. Another advantage of doing this is they have a very advanced, what's called the LIM system, Laboratory Information Management System. So we can go into their system, it's a web-based system, and look at the output of our results if we have questions, if we misplaced a data point, you know, we can always go in and look at their system. So again, it's because they're so large, you have a lot of advantages in going that route. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Budgeted?
Yes.
All right. Questions of Ms. Tadman or Mr. Riquetta? Public comment? Don't see any. Motion's in order. Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to award contract number 1617-084, Safe Drinking Water Act, Analytical Services to Europhens Eaton Analytical, Inc., for a total not to exceed amount of $195,643 over three calendar years to be funded from the water fund laboratory expense account in fiscal years 17 through 20.
A motion, and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, Laura, let's take up, you got Ms. Akers here? Who's going to do it?
I'll start it.
All right.
All right, this is for contract 1617-083, and to appoint Dr. Susan Pintar as the Carson City County Health Officer for not to exceed amount of $28,400 per calendar year. The late material submitted is page nine of the contract. The city provides and pays for Dr. Pintar's professional liability insurance. The current annual premium is $28,782, and this covers Dr. Pintar, Dr. McFerrin, and the health clinics, and a few former doctors. Dr. Pintar's portion is approximately $6,700 a year, and that is budgeted and paid for through the insurance fund.
So, just as a clarification, why are we doing, why don't we just add, why don't we just say that the good doctor takes care of her insurance, and then increase the contract amount from $28,000 to $6,700?
I think I can answer that. It's not general malpractice liability, it's only liability limited to what I do as the public health officer, and it's a lot cheaper for the city to get it at a group rate for me, for Dr. McFerrin, for the other providers, and then prorate it out of there. So you could do it either direction.
So it's not you, then, I get it.
Yeah, it's basically, it's a group policy.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's a group policy. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, it's a group policy, like Laura said, it covers Dr. Pintar, it covers Dr. McFerrin, who is the medical director of the Title X program at the clinic, and it also covers the clinic itself. So it's a group policy.
I could, Susan Pintar, I could go and buy this liability insurance.
I got you, I got you, I'm just wondering, but the way this is worded, it says that we pay for, I got that, but it seems to me that, you know, for clarity, it says that you're going to join, or how much do we pay? We're going to pay $28,000 out in addition to this?
The $28,400 is the payment to Carson City, the insurance amount is additional out of the insurance fund. And that insurance amount that Laura quoted you is the covering Dr. McFerrin, Dr. Pintar, and the clinic, so it's two separate.
Okay. I might have drafted this differently, but I got, I got what you're doing, all right, all right, all right. Any other questions aboard?
First off, I think you're underpaid.
Thank you.
You do great, many, many things for the community.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I really appreciate what you do, and I seriously believe you're underpaid, so, but, my question is for staff. It says, "From the WIC professional service account and the grant fund, 30% be coming from that." So where is that, what does that grant fund normally do that we're taking 30% of it?
That is the WIC grant, which is the Women, Infants, and Children grant, and under that, we have budgeted 30% for Dr. Pintar to provide consultation. She works with staff on various issues, so that comes directly out of that grant.
But she works with the individuals that...
No, no, I work with the WIC staff.
Staff.
For Carson City Health and Human Services. There's professional consultations that are sometimes needed. WIC is the Women, Infants, and Children Nutrition Supplement Program, that's a federal program, and the state gives Carson City a pass-through grant for that. And so a piece of that grant partly pays for my services within there, and in return, I consult to the WIC staff in Carson City and Douglas County.
Just want to make sure it's coming back in that respect.
Right.
Okay, that it's helping those individuals, that it should be helping. Thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment? Ready for motion? Motion's in order.
I move to approve contract number 1617-083, to find that Dr. Susan Pintar is qualified to serve as a Carson City County Health Officer, to appoint Susan Pintar, M.D., as a Carson City County Health Officer pursuant to CCMC 9.01.030, to CCMC 9.01.050, to set the compensation of the county health officer at a not-to-exceed amount of $28,400 per calendar year, which is low, I agree. Anyway, to be paid in equal monthly payments of $2,366.67 from January 1 of 2017 through December 31 of 2018, which will be funded 30% from the WIC professional services account in the grant fund, and 70% from the Health Administration professional services account in the general fund in fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 19.
So motion, and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Dr. Pintar, I think I speak, you know, you've heard from both Karen and Jim, I think I speak for all of us up here. You're doing a nice, a very good job as our health officer.
I appreciate that, thank you for the vote of confidence.
You're a little tough, but that's okay. You're a little tough, but you keep us on track, and it's not lost on us that, you know, we've been accredited during your tenure. It's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
It's a big deal, okay.
We have a great staff at the Health Department, make my job a lot easier. Thank you.
And Susan, I want to thank you for your participation on SART.
You're welcome, thank you.
See, now you can leave before we...
Get all mushy.
All right, all right, thanks, Doc. All right, all right, thank you. All right, let's take up the next item. Health and Human Services, this is item 12A, possible approval of a full-time city position, a public health preparator planner to replace the existing full-time contractual public health planner position, which is currently budgeted and funded by PHP grants. Tell us what's going on here.
Okay, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, so I'm going to give you just a little bit of background. This contracted position has existed since 2009, and it was set up as a contracted position because it was an individual that was employed by the state, retired, and came and joined us. And since then, through the grants, we now have two planner positions, one that was a city position, one that was this contract position. And why we have two, one of them works with the healthcare facilities around town, and works in various ways that if we were to have a public health emergency, then they have worked with those agencies to practice and go through plans to make sure that we can help with those individuals. The other position is a community position, and these are working with community organizations that's doing a lot of the same things, that if we have a public health emergency, we're prepared, we've practiced, we have plans that we can help the individuals. So the person that was in this position, the contract position, retired as of June 30th, and before she retired, I took it to IFC and asked that this position get changed to a city position. And at that time, I was advised to at least try to get a contract person in there, and I've tried. I haven't, we haven't received any qualified individuals, so I went back to IFC and asked permission to make this a city position and mirror it like our other PHP planner, and so that's why I'm before you today to ask that this be a city position instead of a contracted position. The... The funds for this position has been budgeted through the grants, we've paid for it through the contract. We don't see a lot of difference being a city position, but I think as opening it up as a city position, I'll have a better chance at getting someone for that position. And the activities that this position would take care of have since basically been put on hold until we can get someone in there, because we just, we don't have the staffing to take care of both positions' activities with just one person.
I think supervisor Ponkowski's gonna ask a question, I am, so I'm gonna let him go there. Go.
Maybe, maybe it's the same question. Nikki, typical question when these come in front of us, if we are to approve this position as a city position today, it is strictly paid for by a grant. So if that grant, if we were not to get that grant continued, or when the grant ends, then this position goes away?
Yes, I would have to be in that position to take that action.
But because it's a city employee, they would then have bumping rights?
Yes, they can.
Thank you.
That was my question.
That was your question?
That was where we were going. I think that all of us had that question.
That's what happened.
Yeah, well, I think that's, you know, that's what we're concerned about. And, you know, I think the city manager and I were just having a discussion with the newspaper yesterday about, you know, we've got to be careful as the, about keeping a line on employees as we move forward. When the economy starts to increase, demand starts to increase, it's demand for services, we want to be very careful about how we do these things. I'm encouraged that it's gone through IFC, so. Any other questions?
Mr. General.
General questions in order.
So Nikki, why is it that you think if it's an employee that you'll get, so you didn't get any response through Marathon?
No, no, no response. And we've reached out to some of the individuals within this field, and asked if they, if it was a city-benefited position, if they would be interested, and we've had positive feedback.
So do you think it's because of PERS, that people in the area want to continue their PERS benefit maybe and transfer to the city?
Part, yeah, that, and it's just, you know, you've got individuals that they're looking for benefits.
And this position's been, this service has been provided for how long?
With this individual, it's been since 2009, the H1N1 is when it first started. And then we, you know, have done some restructuring, and now we have two planners, like I explained.
So Nikki, that brings up a good point. Again, going back to if and when this grant ends, then what do you do? I mean, we're no longer gonna provide that, that planning service, so how critical is this, since we're potentially faced with losing it at some point in the near future anyway?
We're going into another budget, a five-year plan, budget period, and confident that we're gonna get the funds back. It's been pretty consistent. We have had a little bit of reduction in there, and we've had to just kind of really be careful on how we're budgeting in that, but we're confident that these funds are gonna come back through.
Right, but my question was, what are you gonna do if it goes away?
Then, then we're gonna have to relook at the program and reevaluate if this service is a need in our community, and what actions we, as the city, want to take from there, kind of like we've discussed, you know, with, through the Board of Health on a lot of our services at the Health Department.
Angela Baroso, Public Health Preparedness Manager for the Health Department. I just wanted to add to what Nikki was saying, is I actually started working on these grants in 2002. They're basically considered cooperative agreements, and they're approved through the CDC and Health and Human Services for five-year sections. However, the appropriations come from Congress annually, so that's why we don't always know each year what our budget is gonna be. We, this year, have been told again that we're gonna get flat funding, so we've had basically the same amount of funding for the last three years, and we've been able to support these two planner positions. So in July 1 of 2017, that begins another five-year program, and that's why we feel pretty confident that these funds are gonna continue. And also, because they did start as what they called bioterrorism right after 9/11, they have now changed to become all hazards preparedness, and that's why we work closely with emergency management, as well as our hospitals and healthcare systems. And I think the importance of these grants, even if these services may go away, the value is that we actually work with our hospital and our other healthcare systems to make sure that we have a healthcare evacuation annex, we have a medical surge plan, just something happened in the hospital, and how we support them in those efforts, along with emergency management. That's on the healthcare system side. On the community preparedness side, those are the big exercises that we do, the big flu clinics that we do, in order for the community to be prepared in case we had to either prophylax through like antibiotics, or give vaccinations. But we also work a lot with vulnerable populations, they're called, with the group homes, for people who are either disabled, you know, low literacy, that kind of thing. And so our plans include them, and how we reach them with communications, how we communicate with the public in an emergency. So those are the things that we'd have to look at, and whether or not the community thinks that those are of value if those grants go away.
Well, those have been of value in the past, I would say, unless I misreading something.
No, I think they're of huge value, actually, and I think we're...
That's helpful, I think.
Yeah. And it's also just a quick thing, is, you know, the state employees, and actually even the people in Washoe County, Washoe County Health District that do what we do, kind of give us credit for saying that they want to come to Carson if something happens, because they know that our plans are so good, and that we have good outreach to the community.
All right. Other board comments?
So when the public is taking part, like in the, like Angela was talking, the large flu clinic, they're seeing it as, you know, the, it's the public getting their flu shot. What we're seeing it as, it's an exercise on how effectively we can put a large number of people through quickly.
Okay. Other board comments? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any. Board, anybody want to try a motion?
I'll do it.
Go.
I move to approve a full-time city CCEA position, Public Health Preparedness Planner, to replace the existing full-time contractual PHP planner position, which is currently budgeted and funded by PHP grants.
There's motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, carried. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take up the next one, while you're there, 12B, possible acceptance of a grant of $92,066 from Behavioral Health Epidemiology and Laboratory in Infectious Disease, for the period August 1, 2016 through July 2017.
Okay, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So a little bit of background on this. Also, this grant historically has been under $50,000, and with this particular grant, we got more funding, and that is why it's coming to the board now, because it's over the $50,000 threshold per policy. You'll see that the period is August 1, 2016, to July 31, 2017. This just was received from the state, so, you know, beyond our control. And historically, this does come, this grant does come to us a little late, as a lot of other grants do, and this one just was a little bit later. So, and then if you've got program questions, I've got Dustin here that directly oversees that program.
Is this matching money, or is this straight grant money?
No match.
You want to talk to Dustin about the program, please?
For the record, Dustin Booth, Division Manager for Disease Control and Prevention. This grant will be, the Epidemiology Laboratory Capacity Grant, or what we call the ELC grant, we've had it for several years. It funds contract staff to do influenza surveillance, plus other infectious disease surveillance. It also funds part of a full-time staff to do other infectious disease surveillance that we do at the Health Department. The reason why it went up this year is there's some new activities that we'll fund through a contract employee to look at hospital infection control and antimicrobial stewardship in regards to making sure that the proper antibiotics are being prescribed in the community, and working with our healthcare providers on that.
How do you do that? I mean, I just had the question about, that seems to me to be a hospital issue, and I agree that, you know, that, you're talking about, I mean, the note says, "Provide funding for working with healthcare providers in reducing hospital-acquired infections," which is what you talked about. But why is that something we're involved with as opposed to the hospital?
So we work with the hospital in regards to this. One of the things that, we're working actually as a whole Northern Nevada, we're partnering with Washoe County, and all the hospitals up in Washoe County, to look at getting our, what they call an antibiogram. So each hospital, they look at the bacterias that are coming through, and they test them for antimicrobial susceptibility, so the antibiotic susceptibility, and then they publish that. So we're working on efforts to get that more out in the public, so that all the doctors know to which, you know, what's, what's in our community, and what antibiotics to prescribe. So it's a big education component with our healthcare facilities and with the healthcare providers.
And this is even, goes even beyond, it's, you know, the, I know the Nevada Nurses Association is starting to look at this. We're talking about bacteria that are resistant to antibiotics, and that's not just a hospital problem, that's a whole community problem. And in what our primary care providers are prescribing to patients, you know, it's education to the public, that whenever you go into the doctor for what you think is, needs an antibiotic, it doesn't always need an antibiotic. So it's getting that education out there to providers and to the public, that you don't always need an antibiotic, because what we're doing by over-prescribing all these antibiotics, we are harboring and building very resistant bugs that we do not have antibiotics to fight.
I'm gonna talk about MRSA, which is horrible and very prevalent. Does any of this education include procedures that hospitals or and/or other medical providers should follow in order to prevent contacting that from their particular environments? Patients are sick and vulnerable when they go in, so that's, that's my question.
Yeah, so we will be working with our, the healthcare, so, you know, our local hospitals in regards to their infection control plans, and then also looking at developing outbreak plans with them, so that they are experiencing that. So with that would be, you know, infection control procedures that the hospital does so that they don't spread it within the hospital. We also, so we do this, we hope to do this at the local level. The state is also the licensing agency of these healthcare facilities. They also do part of this, but we want to have a local focus of this, and have the importance that it's, you know, this could be a problem at a local level, and we don't want it to be spreading any more than it already has the potential to.
And again, it's working with those healthcare facilities. I know, you know, I come from the surgical hospital, and yeah, that education goes out with patients, but it's, it's educating them even, the patients, and looking at best practices, you know, what has changed, what can we implement on our end, the hospital, and it's all of us working together.
So my question moves more into the grant award itself being August 1, and I know that we didn't receive it till December 5. And so my question becomes, were we having expenses from August 1? And if we hadn't gotten the grant, then where would those expenses have charged?
So, yeah, there were expenses, but we also have the other grant that were, the ELC grant that we had received before, that those expenses are being charged against. This grant, like Dustin said, is to take on a new project, and so the additional expenses will be with this new project. But we, we have the ELC grant from before that will cover the existing expenses. The new projects that we are looking at with the, this grant here, have been put off until we got it through the state and can move forward on it.
So let me clarify again, because that's two different answers. So there are no August, so all the expenses will start in December when you got this grant?
Well, we have, so we have expenses from, when did this start? August. And those expenses will be paid with the grant.
With this grant?
Is it this grant, or is it the other one? This grant? Yeah, so it's this grant. It's retroactive.
So I know, but my, my point being is, we're expensing money on behalf of a grant, without a grant award. So if we had not received the grant, then we would have had dollars coming out of the general fund?
Well, and we, we knew this grant was coming forward, the state. It wasn't a question of if, it was when they got everything together. So we knew it was coming forward.
So you mean, like you had a notice of award, just didn't have the actual grant award?
Not an official notice of award, but through conversations with the state, we knew it was coming. And that kind of, that happens with some of the grants, and, but we know that they're coming, and then there, everything is retroactive.
Well, maybe some point we can have a discussion with finance and the granting agencies, because it's just not good practice. Yeah, this, this is just, you're right, we're spending money, then the taxpayer may be obligated, and then the grant doesn't. And often what happens is the grant awards don't come in at the amount you expect. So, you know, and then where do we come up with that difference? And so I don't know why it's so late, and you don't know why either, so maybe it's...
That's through the state. And just for a little bit of information, like I know, I'm working on the Ryan White grant right now, and of course, that one's not coming up until April 1. But I, I don't have my notice of grant award, but I know what, they've already communicated to me what my amount is going to be.
In writing?
What's that?
In writing?
No, verbally.
Okay, I'm gonna just make another assessment then. How about at least get an email follow-up or something?
Yeah.
Because then you're on the hook.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
But so that's kind of how the communications with the state and that go, so we, we do most of the time know what's, what's happening.
Well, maybe on the next item, we'll follow up with a discussion. Thanks.
Well, in one sense, I think, you know, some good points are raised, and I, you know, and I think when you drill down a little bit, part of this, part of this issue is, is that your, your department lives on grants.
Yes, they do.
And coordinating continuation of service, coordinating people, and the whole thing, with the certainty or uncertainty of grant funding is difficult, so, you know, anyway, all right.
It can lead to sleepless nights.
Yeah, it does up here, too. Don't worry.
Yeah, up here, too.
Yeah. I mean, because you know, you know, Nikki, the last thing we want to do up here is have to bail out something where we knew in advance that we didn't have to do it. I mean, okay?
Correct, I understand.
All right, all right. Public comment? Don't see any motions in order.
I move to authorize Carson City to accept a grant award in the amount of $92,066 from the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, Epidemiology, and Laboratory Capacity for Infectious Disease for the period of August 1, 2016, through July 31, 2017.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Vote, discussion? Didn't see any. On a motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Caffer. All right, let's take up item 13. This is discussion on possible approval or acceptance of the Carson City Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016. You guys ready to go, or you want a break for a minute?
I'll do a disclosure, then.
Do a, we'll do a disclosure while you're setting up. Go ahead.
NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My son works for I. Bailey, however, my son is not assigned to Carson City, and has no involvement whatsoever with the financial report nor the audit that is the subject the financial report nor the audit that is the subject of this agenda item. Therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. As such, this is not a disqualifying conflict, and I will be participating in this matter.
Any other disclosures? Don't see any. You ready, Ms. Paulson?
Yes. Good morning, Nancy Paulson, Chief Financial Officer, and I also have Sherry Russell, the Deputy CFO, and Pam Ganger, one of our accounting managers. And I want to recognize Jamie Stevenson, too. She's another accounting manager, but she's back at the office, working really hard on payroll projections for next year's budget. And I have Dan Carter here with Ida Bailey, and he's going to give a presentation on the city's financial report and the results of the audit.
Welcome, Dan. Thank you for taking care of, thank you for doing the report.
Absolutely, thank you for having me. For the record, Dan Carter, engagement partner on Carson City's external financial statement audit. So, this morning, we'll go through, just real quick, some fiscal year 2016 financial highlights. We'll go through the results of our audit, and then we'll talk about just one upcoming standard that will affect the city's financial statements on a go-forward basis. Definitely don't hesitate to stop me at any time if you have questions. We can just go through them, then go through things in more detail, or if you want me to just speed it up and get out of here, that's okay, too. Used to that. So, this is basically looking at Carson City's statement and net position. This is for governmental activities only. We'll do some kind of comparative this year to last year, kind of see where the city stands. You can see, overall, the assets and deferred outflows of resources for the governmental activities increased about $3 million over last year, primarily due to an increase in capital assets. The liabilities and deferred inflows of resources increased about $600,000. The main driver of that is the retirement obligations, leading to an overall increase in governmental net position of about $2.4 million. So, this is statement of activities. You can see revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Overall revenue is down about $29.1 million over last year. That's primarily due to, last year, we had a, or you guys had a $31.2 million BLM donation that was recorded in capital grants and contributions. That wasn't a recurring item, so that's why you see that big decrease. Expenses basically flat. Again, revenue outpacing expenses. You can see an increase to the bottom line of that $2.4 million. Revenues by source for governmental activities. This chart looks very, very similar to last year with the exception of that, that yellow section, capital grants and contributions last year was the number one source because of that BLM donation. So, this year, this looks very, very similar to how it has in the past, where property taxes are number one, consolidated taxes number two, and other taxes coming at number Expenses by function, again, very, very similar to last year. Number one, public safety. Down there, second from the bottom, number two, general government. And actually, Culture and Rec came in at number three this year, where Public Works was number three last year. But, no substantial changes. So, we look specifically at the general fund. This is revenue and expenses over the last five years. Just gives you a good trend analysis. You can see just moderate growth in both revenues and expenses. Revenue's up about $2.9 million over last year, just kind of across all the different sources, just minor increases. And expenses up about $2.6 million, again, across all functions, nothing really significant. And then this is general fund, fund balances. You can see the big green boxes, your unassigned fund balance. The light blue is the assigned. Red is the restricted, and the little tiny one down way at the bottom is non-spendable. So, you can see changes in each of the classifications of fund balance for the general fund. Obviously, fund balance growing, and that unassigned amount getting larger over the prior year. So, we go back to kind of the government-wide analysis. This is business-type activities, covers sewer water, ambulance, stormwater, cemetery, and building permits. Again, you can see assets and deferred outflows of resources increasing over the prior year, about $15.9 million, primarily related to CIP, construction in progress. The liabilities and deferred inflows of resources up about $12.6 million over last year, almost completely related to bonds payable. And again, increasing net position of about $3.3 million. If we look at the business-type activities, revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, you can see revenue's up about $3 million, primarily related to charges for services in the sewer and water fund. Expenses up about $1.7 million, and that, again, is just across all activities, nothing major standing out. But with revenues outpacing expenses, again, a $3 million, $3.2 million addition to the bottom line for business-type activities. So, those are high-level financial statement results. Any questions or comments on those? Pretty straightforward. Now, we'll get into the summary of auditor's results. As part of our audit, we issued three separate reports. The independent auditors report on the basic financial statements on pages nine through 11. The independent auditors report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. What we typically refer to as our Yellow Book Report, just to, that's a really long title, on pages 187 and 188. And then the independent auditors report on compliance for each major program, each major federal program, and report on internal control over compliance required by uniform guidance. That's the audit over the major federal award programs, pages 189 to 191. Please to report, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance we're able to provide in our profession, so definitely a good thing. The compliance with NRS and NAC is disclosed in Note 2B to the financial statements. Page 45, there was one over expenditure reported in the Caffer, it was $605 in the cemetery fund. But the city conformed to all other significant statutory and administrative code requirements on its fiscal administration during the year.
So, whose head do we get on a stake for $605?
I hope I'm not going to prison for $605.
Moving on to the Yellow Book Report.
Yeah, but it's like that old story, you know, if you're a penny off, you know that story. Could be more than a penny. All right, go.
So, to the Yellow Book Report, not an expression of opinion, but just a report on internal controls. We had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies to report. Then on to the single audit. On page 189 of the Caffer, we did issue a modified opinion on compliance in relation to the single audit. Again, we did have one material weakness and two significant deficiencies in relation to the federal award programs. Those are reported in the Caffer, I'm not sure I need to go through them in detail if there's any questions or concerns. I do always like to point out that we had no question costs as part of the single audit, no federal money was spent inappropriately, just issues related to reporting and cash management, those sorts of things, so.
Dan, I just want to say thank you to Nancy, because I addressed my questions to her with regards to those issues, and she answered them completely. So, thank you. Actually, in the federal financial reporting and things, the issue that you just heard prior with the Health Department, my concerns become that we're creating expenditures against grants that would have period reporting that we're missing because we don't even get the grant reward, award till beyond even a quarterly report to draw, and that it's really an issue both for the Finance Department, the Health Department. Is there, is it just common that the Health Division has a hard time getting all these grants out to all the local governments? Or are you seeing something in all the awards from the state level taking so long and causing this, it's a ripple effect through the governmental entities?
That's a very good question. I guess I wouldn't say that there's anything significant that's jumped out at me. I think, unfortunately, it's kind of the nature of the beast that you've got to, you've got to spend some money in advance, doing some planning and pre-work before the grants come in. It definitely should be tracked and be reimbursed once that grant money is received, and just keeping an eye on that as far as, you know, make sure it doesn't get to be significant if it's questionable.
And there's another one I can think, think about that's happening is the, comes from the Department of Emergency Management, and those come in late. But I think, I think with, like, with Nikki's award, it said it was from August 1st. As long as they're incurring those expenses, you know, after August 1st, then they'll be reimbursed.
I think Laurie's point is that if we don't get the grant, and the grant comes in less than what we anticipated, then maybe we don't. So, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Laurie's question is, are we doing everything that we can on our end from a fiscal management point to manage these grants when they do come in late? Or are there best practices that we could implement that would help us? Is that correct?
We usually rely on the Health Department, and they manage their grants, and I think they do hold off on spending, you know, any money in those particular grants, you know, until they're sure how much is going to come in and that we're going to get the award.
And the obvious expense is payroll, and that doesn't go away. So, if you don't get the grant, no matter what, we, we have a liability, and we had to pay the employee. So, that's, the ones that have personnel costs, it's easy, like you said, okay, I just won't order paper, or I won't order this until the actual award arrives. But I'm concerned about, you know, there's costs of employees that are continuing, and we're on the hook for them.
Right, and for the most part, I don't think that's occurring on some of the larger grants, like the Public Health Preparedness Grant that's over $400,000. That's an ongoing grant that we've had, you know, 10-plus years. So, I don't, I don't think that we're getting these late awards on those types of grants that involve a number of employees.
So, maybe a solution to this, I'd direct this to the city manager, maybe we, you can make a note, and when we go through the next annual strategic planning session, maybe we can add this to the items that we discussed to make sure that we're following best management practices.
And second to last slide here, we do, as part of our audit, make sure that corrective action has been taken by the city in all of our prior year findings. We did have five findings reported in the Caffer last year, and we did find that corrective action was taken on every one of them, so definitely a good thing.
And on the federal ones, seem to be that at least two of them were oversight of, just put a second set of eyes on the actual grant reporting. What was, talk to me about the one that was a material weakness. What was that one?
I think, I think, big picture, it all comes down to review. That was, there were federal monies that were requested in advance of the expenditures actually being made. And I think, I think every one of the findings probably could have been corrected with the second set of eyes, just somebody double-checking and making sure that what the individual preparing those reports or requesting those funds had done was accurate, so.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Anybody else on the board?
May I just ask, Nancy? So, on that one where the draw occurred, is it just the individual that prepares the report and makes the draw, or is there a second approval before a draw is done?
So, our process is, we review in finance every three months, we go through all the draws and make sure everything's okay. So, we had actually in finance already caught that $51,000 and read the employee of the riot act because we knew he wasn't supposed to draw that money before it was actually spent. And it was simply the employee looking at the wrong column in the, in the, in the system. So, now he knows it won't happen again. It's just, Dan's comment on somebody should be reviewing it before it goes out has been noted, and I believe the Public Works Department is going to add that procedure, so.
So, there'll be two eyes then before a draw?
Before it goes out, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And last slide, just to make the board aware, this is actually not going to be implemented until fiscal year ended 6/30/18, but the next big change coming down from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is Statement Number 75, which is accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pension plans. Basically, this just brings the accounting and financial reporting for the OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, in line with how we're accounting for it for pensions. So, will be a big change. We've got a couple of years to work through and figure it out, so that's all I have.
Dan, I have a question on that. Because the way, if I understand correctly, the way we make our contributions for post-employment benefits is based more on, on actual numbers, because we have a better idea of what those numbers are, as opposed to the way we contribute for PERS. We get a number from PERS, and that's based on rates of return that probably, and frankly, aren't, aren't realistic. Would you agree with that statement that the way we're funding post-employment benefits is different, so we're probably actually more accurate in the amount that we're contributing on those? Or am I not understanding that correctly?
I don't know if I would say it's an accuracy thing. You guys are making your required contributions, you know, for both. There's a dollar amount that's defined. I think where it's different is that you have no ability to address your PERS liability because you contribute only what PERS asks you to contribute, where you do have an ability to address the OPEB liability, because you can pre-fund and you can set aside money in advance over and above those required minimum contributions to bring that liability down.
And that's kind of where I'm headed. Nancy, aren't we doing that? Aren't we contributing in excess of the minimums? No? Or just contributing the minimum?
No, we created a trust.
I thought we transferred money over.
We just created a trust in 2016, and so, we are, we are paying the normal contributions so that all the employees get paid and everybody gets paid. However, it's over, the funding that liability is amortized over 30 years, and it's a very large liability. So, we are only able to contribute about 1% of the employee's salary, which is about $300,000 a year. Right now, we have $700,000 in there, in the trust. So, it's going to take some time to build that up because we just don't have the excess cash right now.
Dan, could you briefly just run through how the pension plan costs are disclosed on the financial statement? What is our liability, what the pension plan cost liabilities, what I'm talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the liability on the government-wide basis, as it stands right now, sits on your books at $82.3 million, the net retirement obligation to the city.
And that's reflected in the city's balance sheet?
It is.
And what does that liability mean?
That's a very good question. Kind of like how Sherry was saying, you know, that liability will be paid over the next 30 years. You don't have to, on July 1, cut a check to PERS for $83 million. You will never have to probably cut a check to PERS for that dollar amount, even if the city closes, this is somewhat theoretical, even if the city were to close its doors, those employees, that number is based on your contributions to PERS, based on, and in relation to every other local government in Nevada's contributions. So, if employees left, their PERS liability, in essence, follows them because the, wherever they end up, those people are now contributing to them, for them, to PERS. So, it's, it's a long-term liability that, truthfully, like we said before, is there's no way for you to address it. The rates are set by legislature. You have to pay the rate that they believe will eventually, depending on your opinion of the discount rates that they use, will eventually amortize that liability and provide funding when those people retire. But it is, it is based on the current Governmental Accounting Standards, a liability that has to be shown on your books.
Is there a difference between the private sector accounting for pension liability and government accounting?
I think the, the new standards that the GAZB came up with to, was to bring governmental accounting more in line with the private sector. Everyone kind of knew that there was a liability out there for pensions, but no one ever really talked about it because you couldn't see what it was, you couldn't, you know, it wasn't in anybody's financial statements. So, I think the change to bring it on to governmental books is, is to be more in line with the private sector.
And if I want to measure, think about what that liability means to us, I mean, I got it's a long-term liability. But what does it mean if that go, I mean, is it meaningful for us if it goes up or down? Let me ask it like that. If it changes, I mean, or what should we be looking at in terms of financial security or stability?
That's, that's a very good question. It's, it certainly changes, and it can change drastically depending on a lot of factors that are outside your control, you know, what PERS does. I guess I would say that it, it doesn't seem to have impacted our governmental clients like we thought it would. I mean, it's a huge, huge number that came onto everybody's books, but bond ratings didn't change. change, you know, the lights are still on, you know, it's, it's, it's a number, but it's, it's a paper number on your financial statements. It's not something that should really play into the fiscal administration of the city on a go-forward basis, because you really have no ability to do anything about it.
So Dan, would, in your opinion, would we be better off from an accounting standpoint with a defined contribution system rather than a defined benefit system?
That's a, that's a little bit of a political.
No, 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 I'm talking about from an accounting, I'm only talking about from an accounting standpoint, because then you know basically what that number is, and now you're only talking about whatever discount rate you're, you're going to be using.
Agreed. But again, that's, that's outside the city's control, that's up to Nevada Legislature to decide.
That's a nice way out.
But I would point out that that liability sits on the government-wide financial statements only. If you look in the fund financial statements, it's not required to be reported back there. So when you're looking at the fiscal health of the general fund, or, you know, individual funds, it's not included on that, those balance sheets. So that makes it nice in, in your ability to see how those funds stand without those significant long-term liabilities.
And we don't need to expect change in bond ratings as a result of those liabilities, or should we?
I mean, it certainly hasn't happened yet, and no one seems to be terribly concerned about it. I think, I think our profession did a good job of explaining that this was coming and what it was going to mean, and, and so the, you know, the bankers seemed to get it and, and didn't freak out when everybody's net position dropped substantially.
Any other questions? Sorry. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, just one brief comment. Dan, would you go back up to the general fund, ending fund balance, bar graph that you had? So I just want to briefly thank Nancy Paulson, the city CFO. Her and her team here have done a magnificent job, or really, the past year and a half, almost two years now she's been in place. Everyone loves Nancy, but Nancy's pretty tough, too. And she's actually put the city in a, in a pretty favorable position here. Very conservative view of both revenues and expenditures. I know there was broad, there was broad consensus on the board here to increase that policy on our ending fund balance, with the fuel revenue indexing not passing, and with a renewed emphasis on things like deferred maintenance and our asset management program. I believe I also have to bring an option to you that may, that may involve spending down some of the fund balance in order to hit some of your priorities, at least as an option. But Nancy and her team has really put us in, in a very good and a very healthy position through a lot of hard work, as well as conservative budgeting. We're going to step through the budgeting process for the next fiscal year, we've already started it internally. In fact, tomorrow is the deadline I had for my department directors to have their updated performance metrics. If you go on our webpage and you hit our transparency tab, you can go to the current performance metrics. Just as I told you when we first implemented that, we're going to kind of fly the plane as we build it. So we're improving and expanding the performance metrics so that we can move to a performance-based budgeting model. So we'll, tomorrow I should have all the updated metrics from the department directors, we'll be updating that page as we step forward through the next year's budget cycle. So I just want to thank Nancy publicly for her work here.
Jim.
You do great work. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, all, the whole team, so if you just bear with me and go to page 52, and at the bottom it says, as of June 30, Phase 2, that's $7 million. Is that set aside, or where would that money come from down the line?
That would come from the 5-cent gas tax, but that payment has been deferred for now.
Okay, it's been deferred, so when, where would that funding come from? I mean, is it being set aside now, or do we have to collect it in the future, or is there anything there for that now?
It's not being set aside right now for that purpose, but, and it would just be future collections in the Regional Transportation Fund.
And when would that be activated? How will that become activated?
If I could, it's.
I'm actually going to bring Patrick up, too.
It's actually, once the freeway is completed, which includes the freeway interchange, which has not yet been even scheduled, so we don't know when that date might be.
Yes, Patrick Pittincher, Transportation Manager, Carson City Public Works, I'll agree with what Supervisor Bonkowski just said, and I'll just add that for the terms of the agreement, it doesn't happen until after the completion, and it would be through 3 cents of the 5 cents of the gas tax. So the payments would begin based on what the value is of those 3 cents until completion of the payments.
Okay. Then on page 55, paragraph 3, the 1/8 cent sales tax revenue, can you just briefly go over that?
This is pledged revenue for the VNT historical bonds, and last year we refinanced this bond in order to lower the interest rate, because the city was having to supplement a little bit. And I'm happy to announce, right now, we do not have to supplement any bit, anything. The sales tax has increased and the interest rate decreased, so we've met in the middle, and they're paying their own bonds now.
Good. That's good news. And also the next paragraph, if you can just touch base over that, too?
Yes, this is the infrastructure sales tax, this is a new one as well. And this one, we still have quite a bit of pledged revenue available, which is good, because we do have slated another bond issue for this project going forward. But the 1/8 cent sales tax is more than covering the principal and interest currently.
But there could be more projects coming down the line, correct?
Yes, that was in the initial plan.
And then on the next paragraph, that one as well, the room tax refunding, if you can touch base on that, please.
Sure, this comes through CCVB, Carson City's Visitor Bureau, and so they, again, they have pledged revenues of 1.5 million, and their principal and interest payments together are about 350,000, so there's plenty of revenue coming in to make those payments.
And that was debt issued for the VNT also.
And this would be page 88, but it's before 89, there's no page number on it. If you don't mind, if you could just touch base over the Street Maintenance Fund and the VNT Special Infrastructure Fund?
Are you, are you just talking about the section that describes the different special revenue funds?
Says yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. The Street Maintenance Fund?
Yeah, just touch base on that, and the VNT Special Infrastructure Fund, just touch base on it if you don't mind, just for public input.
So the Street Maintenance Fund accounts for, there's a quarter percent sales tax that is for the sole purpose of maintaining and repairing public roads in Carson City. It also accounts for another 1 cent per gallon motor vehicle fuel tax approved by the voters in 1986, and $3.60 and 1.75 cents per gallon of motor vehicle fuel taxes that are collected in accordance with various NRSs, and those can only be used for street maintenance.
And street maintenance incorporates maintenance, snow removal, anything that deals with the streets, correct?
Correct, and salaries and benefits for the employees.
If you could just touch base on VNT, that'd be great.
And that was a 1/8 percent sales tax that was levied to, in order to repay the bonds issued for the VNT project.
Thank you.
Dan, are you done? Got more? Huh? Got it? Okay. Any other questions on the board? So Nancy, you wouldn't mind a performance metric that says, sales taxes are going to be at least 10% in over last year's, no matter what, right?
I wouldn't mind if it actually happened.
Since you've done such a great job, Nancy. You're doing such a great job, that's all right.
It's almost there now. I wish I could say it was all me, but I do spend a lot of money, so.
Well, I know you've got a good team there, and I, you know, I would just gratuitously say, you know, Sherry's going to help out on the VNT stuff, and it's been kind of overlooking it, and she's got a sharp eye, too. You guys do a good job, so, thanks.
And I want to thank my team, too, because there are, there are a lot of long hours and late nights to, to get this little book developed, so.
Yeah, well, I came in one day and you were actually vacuuming your own floor. And then I heard that one night you even woke up and was thinking about the Davis Bacon Act and dreaming about it. You know, is that right?
Yeah, there's a lot of nights I wake up at 2, 3:00 in the morning. But I make these guys do all the hard work now, so.
All right. Well, keep, keep dreaming. Okay, all right. Motion, public comment, anybody? I don't see anybody. Motion's in order, Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to accept the Carson City Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016.
Motion is second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. Let's take up the corrective action one for the $605. I think we understand what that's all about. Public comment on this issue? Board comments? Motion's in order.
Okay. I move to adopt the Carson City Plan of Corrective Action for the fiscal year 1516, statutory violation included in the annual audit.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. Anybody have any questions with respect to the condition of each fund in the Treasury? I don't see any public comment, motions in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through December 5, 2016, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposing, nay, carried unanimously. Okay. I think now we're, we're, item 14, the liquor matter has been pulled for future discussion and continuing discussion. We'll take up item 15. This is, Sue's here, okay. Tell us what's going on here, Sue.
Sue Meriwether, for the record. I am here today as my public administrator hat. The public administrator may protect property of individuals who die in Carson City when a family member or legal, legal representative is not available to do so. Pursuant to NRS 253.050, the public administrator is entitled to compensation for an estate of a reasonable value. This compensation is set by the Board of Supervisors. What I want to do is kind of go over a little bit of review of what my job as a public administrator is. First of all, once I am called upon a house or a, an apartment of someone, I go over there, it is my responsibility to go over there and secure the property and make sure, look for legal documents, address books, wills, valuables, anything to secure that property. That is the first step that I do. I evaluate the property, and then if, if it's a property that entails money, I will call an attorney and hire an attorney to take care of the estate. That's the full administration of the property. I had 10 full administrations in 2015, I only had two, which are currently still open, in 2016. I've had 17 indigent decedents that there's no, no financial money or anything to take care of. Primarily what, how that happens is I have to fill out indigent papers, or try and locate family, and it's very minimal. So what brought me here today to you is an example, I had an estate that I was called upon by the coroner, and I went in to the house and with the coroner, and we looked for valuables and pulled out jewelry and anything we could find, legal documents. We spent, oh, an hour there. I brought everything back to my office that I thought was any valuables, and I went back again with a gentleman that I had hired to help me, assist me. We pulled more documents, and you have to understand, some of these houses, people don't throw things away. So there are boxes and boxes and boxes of documents that we searched through. My, my goal is to find any, you know, any family, wills, any legal documents, anything that I could find to help me with the estate. After the 45 days, I, I determined that the, the house was not worth any, it was not valuable. I filed a small affidavit in the court, district court, and it's under $25,000. I, then I have that authority where I can call, close the bank accounts and contact insurance, she was with PERS, I contacted PERS, I made several phone calls, I called creditors, closed all the accounts, and I sold property, and I sold all of the, the remaining property in the house to one of her friends. Well, one of her friends, while she was cleaning out the property, she found in a trash bag a will. Well, the will named her as the executor. I talked to her friend, and she wanted to take over full administration. A situation like this, it's very rare, and this is the first time this has ever happened. So what, all that time that I had done, I would not, you know, be reimbursed for my services for all the time that I had put into this estate. She would go to court, she would get full administration, and then she would get the credit for all the work that I did. And so this is primarily why I'm coming to you, this is a very rare situation, why I would even use these fees. Washoe and Clark County, I believe, uses them quite often, but, you know, they're a rare breed. And in Carson City, I primarily am doing a lot of, a lot of my work and, and for the estates are on my time. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in any, I, I, let me back up here. I had sent you the pay schedule, I think, for Washoe County. I had also talked to Churchill County, Nye County, and their fee schedules range from, Churchill was $70, and, but what they have in there is they itemize every little detail thing that they do, kind of like what Washoe County, I believe I sent you, that, that was attached. So instead of doing that, I mean, I would just, I would like to just have something where I could at least pay for my gasoline for running around and doing these jobs, and, and, you know, keep track of my time. I guess that's it. Does anyone have any, does that make sense?
So, so in 2002, there was $180 an hour set, right? Wrong?
No. This, this has never been set.
I thought that's what I'm reading on the backs.
Oh, I'm sorry, the public guardian.
The guardian?
The public guardian, that's where I got the $180.
So you're using the $180 for the public?
Because that's what the public guardian, I use them as, as an example. That's what they're using.
And again, Sue, how, how did the 100, so the $180 goes to you or goes to the city, and then what, what happens?
It goes to the public administrator, and I pay taxes on those, that money.
And so, and on, and on estates, are, are those, is the $180 subject to court approval?
Uh, no, sir.
When, when does it become subject to court approval?
Uh, once it goes to full administration.
How about if it's under 25,000? What happens then? What happens then?
That was always, they always use the court fee schedule. When they paid, the administrator took his fees, he would use the NRS 150.020.
So, is it fair to say then that, when does the $180, when does the hourly fee kick in?
That would only be, like, this example.
No, I got the example, but.
Okay.
Express it to me, so I can.
So, if.
Put some arms around. What, I mean, does it happen if there's, if it's, if the estate's less than 5,000, happen, when does it, when does it happen?
No, I.
And who approves that? Who approves the hourly, I mean, who approves your hours?
I do. I keep track of my hours.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Just asking.
So, yes.
The question is, when do you, when do you start, how do you know what to charge the hourly rate to, is what I'm guessing?
Well, okay, yesterday was a prime example. The attorney she retained contacted me to let me know that she had, well, I guess she hasn't retained him, but, they contacted me and they asked me about some stock certificates. So, I started making some phone calls on the stock certificates and I just wrote down my time and made some phone calls and when I stopped, you know, I wrote down my time that I stopped and it's just, it's bookkeeping, basic bookkeeping, you know.
Yeah, no, I got you, but what was unique about that transaction that would tell you that, hey, I'm gonna bill $180? What was unique about it?
Well.
As opposed to just, because I know that when, you know, you get, you get cases where there are either indigents or there's nobody here, there's no family member, no will, no nothing.
It's all, that's all free time, you know, that's all.
Well, it's not, it's not free time, I mean, because you get, you get reimbursed, I mean, from, when it goes to court, you're gonna get reimbursed on that.
Well, the indigent, yeah.
The indigent, yeah.
Yeah.
So, is it only when, when there's an indigent case that you wanna get reimbursed or what?
No, no, no. A case where I would not be able to collect the fees pursuant to the general compensation. So, in other words, I could not, if she gets appointed executor, she's gonna come in with her court documents and I'm going to sign a check over the balance out of the bank account and hand her the folder of all the, all the, all the, all the insurance companies and all the creditors and all the information that I've kept track of, she's gonna come in and she's going to take over that folder and then walk up basically to court and do a final accounting on it.
And again, forgive me for, but.
I know.
But, so, in my thought, you know, when that happens, you would bill the estate, she takes over, you're gonna bill the estate for what you did. And there, and that, and then they would say, okay, yeah, that's a legitimate bill.
Right. Interesting, I did talk to, I brought that question up to the public administrator in Washoe County, because when this all came up, I called Don and I asked him, I said, what do you do with an estate that, you know, you've done all this work on and you've pretty much finished, finished, you know, just about ready to close it up and somebody finds a will? And he goes, oh, yeah, that happens quite a bit. He says, you need to make sure you take your fees out of that before you hand over the check, because you'll never see it. And he referred me to this section, which, you know, has never been, the board has never approved the fee for the public administrator to handle this type of situation. So.
Yeah, I don't, I guess, okay. I'm not certain I understand that one, I mean, 'cause it seems like there's a, there's an expense against the estate no matter what and, and that the estate should be paying that and not, that, that $180, the estate should be paying.
It would be. Right. You're just, you're just setting the rate and the money would come from the estate.
Well, maybe I'm really missing what's going on here then, because if it's an indigent case and there's no money, how do you get paid?
I don't.
All right, so your $180 an hour is used for what, then?
The $180 would be used if, if there is money and I have done services and I will not be appointed, either appointed administrator or executor of the estate.
Okay, and it's that one where, okay. You don't feel comfortable at that juncture saying, okay, tendering a bill to the estate once it's open for your time?
I don't, no, I don't, I don't, I don't bill an estate for, for my services. I would only, only in a situation where there is money.
But technically, you would be, though, because you're taking $180 out of some, some account. Where does $180 come from?
Right. Well, in this situation, this estate, the money that she has, she has.
Right, okay, okay, well.
Like, 13,000, 14,000.
Does the $180 ever come from the general fund?
No, there's no, there's no money coming from this.
And, and this is, this is not, this is, I wanna think about it a minute. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, folks. Go, go.
So, follow-up question then. Right now, you're paid, for an estate that has money, you're paid on a percentage basis of the value of the estate?
Correct.
Do you have the authority to build the estate in this situation, the example that you provided us, where you've done either all or a majority of the work, but you're not appointed as the final administrator? Do you have the ability to, currently, do you have the ability to bill that estate for your services? Or is that the item that is in front of us, that the first step would be for us to set a rate for you to bill the estate?
Correct. Correct. So, if I am appointed administrator, I would, there would be no billing required. I would not, it would not fall under this.
You would be awarded a percentage by the court?
Correct. The courts, the courts administer, yes, they distribute, they, they make that determination based on the amount, the value of the estate. This is, this is a whole separate thing. This would, this would be if I did not, if I did not go to court and, and receive my compensation by statute. This is just a separate, this is just a separate fee that the public administrator can charge for their services.
But, but, just, while we're on this little topic here, Jim, I know we've got the lights on here.
It's working.
You don't actually bill anybody. You're not proposing to bill anybody.
No.
You're just proposing to keep track of your time and take the.
Correct.
And cut a check.
I would document, I would send a, I would, I would.
How do you cut a check to yourself if you don't have any authority? No, but, but, how do you cut, you've got an indigent case, you're not on a bank account, you're doing, you're looking at stock certificates, you're looking at, for a will, you're doing all this, but you're not on a bank account. How do you actually physically get the $180?
I wouldn't. I wouldn't file that, this, I had filed a small affidavit in the courts, not, not the full administration. So, the, the small affidavit gives me the authority to be able to go to banks and do things like that. Indigent burials, I don't do that. So, someone who, you know, I, I determine, I, you know, make phone calls to nursing homes or the motel that they lived in and they, you know, tell me they had no family.
Yeah, and does the court ever see that, then?
No.
I mean, you're, okay, 'cause they're just setting aside.
Right.
They're just to set aside.
Right. That's, when I use an attorney, I go to court.
Right.
I hire an attorney to go to court. This is, this is just a fee that, that is, that is for unusual circumstances, I would say.
And, and the circumstance where the normal fee schedule doesn't work?
Correct.
And it doesn't work, why?
Correct. Because I will not be, because someone else is going to be taking over the estate. I suppose I could use it for.
Okay, well, here's where I'm going with this, Nancy, I'll get off the pot here.
Don't bend if you want.
It seems to me that, you know, that rather than just take, record your hours and pull money out, that whoever, you should be sending a bill to whoever's in charge, who's ever got the responsibility for filing the documents.
Correct.
I mean, maybe that, and that way you've got some protection, that you're not just taking money willy-nilly, because you don't have anybody overlooking, looking over your shoulder on how much your hours are, I mean, because nobody, you're, you're an elected official.
Correct.
You could have, you know, you could, you could pad your hours, not that anybody ever pads their hours, they don't do that. But, but you, but, so, all I'm saying is, if you bill the estate, then, then there's a check that's there and there's, there's somebody that's overlooking that and then you get a check back from the estate. Is that how this should work or not?
It sounds like it would work, but the way that Washoe County, with their experiences, if they hand over the file, most of the time, they don't get that check.
Yeah, but, I mean, you know.
Because she.
It's not, I mean, you know, there are ways, I mean, you, you're a creditor at that juncture. I mean, we're gonna give you the authority to charge $180 an hour for an estate and you're, and you're gonna expend time, you're gonna, you're gonna create an account and bill it and you're a creditor. So, you have standing as a creditor, if there's any money there, you know, you're, you're first in line to get that.
The problem with that, too, is, and I could, there's situations where I've gone in and gone through the property and I had one where they had, he had a son and the son was nowhere to be found and they finally found the son. The son found out that the father had money in the bank and so, he came in, I gave him the, turned over the file to him. I wouldn't have billed him for this, because it was just one little, quick little trip to the house. The son takes the file and the funeral home calls me and said, the son won't pay, so you're gonna have to file for an indigent cremation. And I'm, you know, I, these kind of situations that kind of put me on the spot where, you know, the son, he just kinda bailed and left town, so in a situation like that, if I did bill the estate, I would have never seen that money.
Okay. I've got some questions up here and maybe the DA. Jim, you wanna go first and then we'll see if the DA, DA, you wanna weigh in?
Well, I just wanna clarify, regardless of how she builds and who she builds and when she builds, the, the rate has to be approved by you guys. So, she can bill for reasonable fees for the estate or beneficiaries, but in order for her to even send a bill, it has to be approved by, by you. So, whatever we end up doing, if she is going to bill anybody at any time, it needs to be approved by you, the rate.
Sue, can I ask, do other jurisdictions have somebody that does this besides your position? I mean, is there, is it, and if that is the case, are you gonna look at that at some point in time? 'Cause I just think this would be very draining on your position. I don't know why you even wanna bill for the hour. I, I think you'd be here going, I'd like to get rid of this and let's hire someone to do this. So, is that gonna come before us at some juncture or before them?
Yes, this is a huge burden on the clerk recorder, at least last year, my first year with having, how many did I say? 10. And they were huge estates. They were very, very time-consuming and I made it through, I learned a lot, but there are four of the public administrators in the state are district attorneys and then Clark and Washoe are actually on salary and the rest of them are elected and that's all they do. And I talked to the Nye County clerk yesterday. She was just appointed, I think she said August, and she said she has no budget, she pretty much uses the money that she retains for and, and it's really interesting, because all of the public administrators, they're all, everything's different in every county and how they do things and so, I, I try to talk as much as I can to each one of them to, you know, figure out how to do things. This compensation was approved by her board and the money goes into her budget for this. And I, I told her and I said, well, how, how did, how did they do that? And she says, that's the only money that I get to buy papers and pens and, and operate an office. Well, the interesting part about it is she has to pay taxes on this money and I, which I thought was kind of a wrong way of doing it, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a payment to her, not to the county. So, I mean, that was kind of interesting, the way that they did it. And she does break down, she charges $100 an hour and she breaks down every little detail of duty that she does in her job, just like Washoe and Clark do. I talked to Don, or, I forgot his name, sorry, in Churchill County and he, he just got his board to approve a $500 a month budget to operate his, but otherwise, he was doing it on his own time, with his own money. And you have to understand, too, some of these, you know, most of these are indigent burials or people with no money, so they're not really pulling in a whole lot of money to, to deal with these estates. So, you know, everybody's kinda got their own little different world. I talked to Humboldt County, the DA up there, and asked them how they handle it and they actually handle the public guardian and the public administrator. And, and he has his deputies, you know, doing all the work, so it's.
Is this something you'd have to have an agenda item for, for hiring, or can you just do it in your normal, everyday budget process? Can you hire someone to do this?
I hire, when I have to hire someone, I hire them and use the money from the estate to, to, you know, clean out the houses and, matter of fact, I brought some really nice pictures for you, to show you of, of some of the houses that I have to go through. These are, this one was, I had to have someone come in and actually clean out and pretty much throw it. But I did go through basically every box in this house to make sure there was no valuables in it, because it's my responsibility and I always bring somebody in with me, so that I'm not in there by myself and, but it's my responsibility to secure these properties. So, unless I have a deputized, you know, assistant, which I don't, and, you know, the city is not going to, to fund that, because it's an unfunded.
That person you bring in, is that from your office or do you have to hire outside?
No, I hire someone to come in with me, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Sue. I guess my concern is transparency and liability for you. And someone pointed out to me that NRS 253.091 subsection 3 provides that in a county whose population is less than 100,000, the Board of County Commissioners may, by ordinance, require that honor before March 1 of each year, the public administrator submit to the Board of County Commissioners an independent audit report prepared by a certified public accountant of the records and the Office of the Public Administrator. The ordinance must, A, provide that each, that such audit report cover the period starting January 1 of the previous calendar year and, and by December 31 of the previous calendar year, and prescribe, B, who is responsible for paying the cost of the audit. And I'm just wondering if we need to have some steps in place such that we provide for you to bill and we also cover you in terms of billing and what's going on. It almost seems a little bit cart before the horse and I'm wondering if we need to go about this. It almost seems a little bit cart before the horse, and I'm wondering if we need to go about this a little bit differently. That's just my thought.
And so you would have to direct staff to bring an ordinance before you with those requirements? Because right now, we don't have that in place, so she has no responsibility to come to you with her accounting.
My thought would be to go about it in that fashion, such that, you know, all bases are covered. And then you're not scrambling to try and figure out how you're gonna do it. It's set out, it's straightforward, handled.
So, you, well, of course, this is an optional for the board to do something like this. But to hire, to have it, to have an audit, you would call for a full audit? Like, that's up to you. Let me just, let, kind of explain too, is when I do full administration, it is audited by the courts. So, the only circumstances would be in a situation like probably this one. If the board approves a fee, I could charge this estate for, you know, a couple hours of, of work on this estate. That would probably be, be the only thing that would probably need to be audited. But it's only that one. And, and the executor of the estate would be monitoring what I, money I took out. Because right now, I have a spreadsheet showing the money, and it would show that Sue Merriweather was paid such and such amount for her services as administrator. That would be probably the only thing that I would think that would be audited.
And likely that's the case, but I just think that it sets a policy and a procedure, such that, you know, what the steps are, and it just becomes a part of our auditing practices, or whatever we need to do to put in place. But I just think it protects you, just my thought.
If I could follow up on that, I think where Karen's going with that is that it would really drive home to us the number of hours that are being put into the public administrator, and the amount of money that is being compensated, or more importantly, not being compensated, for the public administrator position. So, it would require you to log hours on the indigent cases and assign a value to that, so that when we get the audit, we can see that you put in 200 hours at $180 an hour, and you got no compensation for that. So, I, I think that's where you were headed. It's interesting, I think it would require a lot of discussion and a lot of thought before we went down that road. But it's interesting, because it would then provide information to us, and information is power, information is knowledge. And I think it would really drive home to us your point, which is, I'm doing a heck of a lot of work that I'm not being compensated for.
And, you know, and I think that's a great idea, to be honest with you. But the way that, the way that I work right now, it's one minute I'm doing one job, you know, filing indigent papers, or the next thing, I'm reading a bill on elections, or I'm running in, and, you know, helping the recorders, or... So, to keep track of every little timeframe, I, I know that sounds really funny, but you're welcome to come in my office and watch me work. But it's, it's, and I think it's a great idea, and it'd be really interesting to see how much time goes into filling out cremation papers and, and, you know, indigent papers, or, you know, faxing things to PERS, or, you know, to different things. I, I think a detailed report of everything I, I do with the, the public, as a public administrator, is, is pretty, it would be a pretty big burden on me at this time. But I'm open to whatever your suggestions are. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that the bill that's at the legislature will maybe resolve some of this. And, but that is something that the board will have to address if the position becomes appointed. You will, you know, there's gonna have to be, we're gonna have to have someplace for this person to work, and however that is, works out. But that is, that is something that I think the board will have to look into too, down the road, so...
So, I, I really wanna just discuss how we determine what rate should be used for billing. So, I know you came up with $180, but is there a norm for, I've listened to what you're telling me, the services that you actually provide, going into the home, securing items. And so, I'm trying to look at, is $180 a fair amount? So, I'm more interested in, is that an appropriate billing rate that we should approve for her to get for her services? And so, I'm trying to kind of look, what, you know, CPAs charge, $150 an hour. I'm, I'm trying to gauge why we should approve 180, so that we can deal with the issue today. But I wanna be fair to the estate and fair to you. And so, why not 150? Why, why 180? I, I just think that's high, but...
Yeah, I, I know. When, when I first was talking to the public administrators, and, you know, Washoe County, he, you know, his rate is $200. And I, I think where the, I decided on the 180 was primarily because I wasn't gonna be charging for itemizing every little thing. I, I would just, if there was just one big, you know, issue, you know, if I spent an hour, then that's it. Because I didn't want to have to detail every time I fax something, or every time I, you know, document, sending a letter out, or filling out a form, I, you know, a title search, or whatever. You know, I, I don't wanna nitpick it, I just want, you know, to be reimbursed at some flat fee. I, I think that $180, I thought was fair, because the public administrator, that's what she's charging her, her guardianships with. And, you know, and she knows what it's like to have to do some of this work. It's, it's not, it's, it's not an easy job, I'll just put it out there as that.
But does the public administrator, I mean, the guardian, the other issue is, they actually have a live client that they're dealing with all of their medical issues. I mean, I think there's another added element of complexity to a guardianship, because there's actually someone well-being that they're taking care of. So, I think maybe, you know, maybe 75% of what you're doing is the same, with filing the paperwork and all of that. But, so, that's what we've got in our rate for Debbie, is 180?
180.
Okay, all right.
One other question, Sue. The, the draft that we have in front of us says, I don't have the statute in front of me, but does the statute say that the public administrator is entitled to compensation from both, from either the estate or the beneficiaries?
And I have it up, Mayor, if you'd like for me to read it. It says that the public administrator is entitled to compensation from the estate or from beneficiaries for a reasonable value of his or her services performed in preserving the property of an estate of a deceased person before the appointment of an administrator. Compensation must be set by the Board of County Commissioners. And that is for a county with population of less, I don't know, it doesn't even, that's not even a requirement.
Okay, well, we can take public comment here in a minute, but I think that the issue really gets down to what, what I think we've all been discussing here, and that's the actual, the rate. I mean, there are issues, I, you know, I, there are issues with how this would operate, and, and... But, but as I see the statute, you know, we can set a rate. But I'd be very careful with that, Sue. I mean, because essentially, you're, you're, it's, it's, it's a rate that's not overseen by any, except by you. I mean, where I charge a rate, you know, it's, you know, if I charge you a rate, you get to say whether it's fair or not. And I don't know whether $180 an hour, or I mean, or $150, I mean, you know, works or doesn't work. I mean, but, but I would say that, you know, this whole area here is kind of fraught with issues. But, anyway.
I guess, you know, this is, this has been in the statute for a long, long time, and it's never been addressed. And I just felt like it was time to bring it before the board.
Well, that's okay, I mean, you know...
I'm just learning the job, and so, whatever, you know, the board feels, that's, that's fine.
And we don't want, I mean, nobody should be, nobody should be required to work for no compensation. Let's put it like that. I mean, you know, don't, don't, don't get us wrong up here. We're just trying, you know, I, I suspect, you know, in our hearts up here, what we're trying to do is protect you. So...
Well, the fee was not there before.
Right.
So, whatever the board determines and sets, that's fine.
All right, public comment? It's been an interesting discussion, Sue, all right, all right. Board, what do you wanna do?
I'd like to make a comment and then propose a motion.
Sure.
And I, I think that Lori makes a good point, that there are some distinctions between public guardian and public administrator. Although I may not be the best person to ask what an hourly rate is. Because if, if you ask most people what I charge for an hourly rate, other than my clients, they'd probably tell you I'm not worth it. My clients would probably tell you differently. So, I move to adopt a resolution establishing the hourly fee in the amount of $150 per hour per services performed by the public administrator.
Second.
Would you, would you agree to that that motion is made pursuant to NRS 253.050?
Yes, sir, so amended.
All right, on the motion discussion, sue, for sure.
Is this gonna be okay with you? Is that gonna cover your cost?
Like I said, it wasn't in place before, and, you know, I, and it's not to be abused, you know. So, I, I, I just feel like that there needs to be something there. So, if the time situation occurs where I need to charge an estate, that I have that. I'm not just charging them and not having it set by you.
And Sue, would you be uncomfortable with, with me giving direction to staff that we work forward on an ordinance like this, such that all this is audited? Because, you know, if you're not in that position, somebody else is. I mean, it just, it leaves it open to, to abuse. Not that you would do that, but I, you know, I, I just think there needs to be some controls in place.
And I think you're probably right, because the reason that's in there, I think, is because of a couple counties that there were some problems, and I think the board probably is familiar with that. There is always legislation that comes forward during session. I noticed last session, there was quite a bit of, of legislation that I didn't participate in, but I did listen. And I think we are probably looking at some changes down the road. So, my term ends in two years, so I, that's probably when the changes will come into effect. And I'd be happy to talk with other counties and public administrators on what type of ordinances they have in place, and maybe we can go from there.
So, I just wanted to clarify too, that the $150 amount that I proposed, it's not just randomly chosen. First, my first point was that I think that the public guardian has a few more duties, so the value should theoretically then be somewhat less. You also said that Nye County administrator charges $100 an hour, Washoe County charges $200. The 150 puts us right in the middle of that high and low range. So, that's kind of where I was coming up with that number.
Well, we bill out paralegals, which is essentially what you're doing, $150, somewhere in that neighborhood. I, I would strong, if this motion passes, and I suspect it will, I would strongly encourage you to bill, create an actual bill, and bill the estate. I don't know how the law said that you're able to get paid from the beneficiaries, because they have no ability to pay you. I mean, they're not, it's not their responsibility, but at least that I know of. I mean, but it, that's what the statute says. I mean, so, you know, I would, I would create a bill, and I would bill, actually bill the estate. I wouldn't just create a bill and then, because I don't, because the way this is drafted, you're entitled to compensation from an estate for the reasonable value provided before the appointment of... If an administrator is appointed, that administrator's gonna have charge of the cash, not you, right?
Well, right now, I'm holding the money in an account, in a Citibank account that I have, that I put, and I...
So, how, how did you, how did you do that? How'd you get the money?
I filed a small affidavit in court.
Okay, so you got court approval for that?
Correct. It's, it's small affidavit, it's not, it's just under $25,000. She, I went to the banks, as, as a public administrator, I have the authority to, the banks have to tell me how much money's in the account. So, I kind of do a little research before I even... And then I take, I close the bank accounts.
So, so, but, but, I, I, this is the statute, I'm, I'm just, I, it, it just seems odd that, that, that... When we pass this, and it says before the value, before the appointment of administrator, does that mean you? Or does that mean another administrator? On, on the actual language of the mo, of the ordinance?
That would be, that would be me, if I'm appointed administrator. But a small affidavit is not in full administration. So, I would, I would assume that it's talking about if I'm, if I never...
Am I nuts?
If I'm not the administrator.
No, I, I would probably...
Just tell me I'm nuts, and I'll go on, and we'll take a vote and go on.
I would interpret that to state that before an actual administrator, whether it's Sue or somebody else is appointed by the court, any of that work that's done by Sue can be billed.
Well, here's a, I'll just leave it like this. I would strongly suggest that you create a bill and bill the estate, one way or the other, okay? On the motion, further discussion, sorry. Hearing, not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay, carry. Thank you, Sue, all right. Thanks for the discussion, Sue. No, and again, it's, you know, we're looking at, for, for you, and, you know, we obviously, you know, we've all received an email too, that, you know, concerns about what we're doing here, because there's, you know, you're, just because of how you, you wear two hats here, but, you know...
Three, four, five, six.
Three or four hats, yeah, three or four hats. I mean, and we're really looking, and I think, you know, that the staff's probably got, got an idea that, let's look at the ordinance about going down the audit trail, and that's just for your benefit. And I think, you know, please don't, don't think that we're trying to say that you're taking money or something like that. We're just trying to make sure that, you know, you're protected in this, and go forward, all right?
No, and I clearly understand that, and I think, I think that's a great idea. And I, I knew that this was not gonna be an easy one to explain, because there's, it's just so, there's so many parts to it. You know, as, you know, this is under the public administrator, and then there's, you know, of course, you know, Mayor, dealing with estates, it, it's, there's a lot to it.
Well, you know, sometimes, you know, Sue, we take the good and the bad. I mean, you know, a lot of times, you get the estates that are indigent estates, and then you pop into one where somebody's got gold in their walls, for about six or seven million, you know?
Pays you for 10 years, we're...
Pays you for 10 years, see? I mean, you know, okay, all right, all right, all right. Anything, we're on board comments, anybody? No, this is board comment, not concluding public comment yet, board comments.
Do you, do you want a legislative update, Mr. Mayor? We could do it at the end of the meeting if you want, or...
Yeah, at the end of the meeting's fine, do a legislative update at the end of the meeting. We're on board's non-action items. Jim, go.
First off, I'd like to go on the record that I didn't vote no on anything at today's meeting. So, I wanna make sure that gets in the paper and in the, in the minutes of the meeting. I, I would like to comment, city staff, on realigning how the $1.4 million is spent on street repair, snow removal, and street sweeping. I, I believe we're doing the processing something better, so we can see how that money is being spent on various tasks the city does. I would also like to kind of re-bring up the issues that maybe possibly, in the future, the city could establish a water and sewer utility rate assistance program as our, for our neediest citizens here in Carson City, as do other communities as well. I would also like to see improvement in how our funds are distributed within the capital improvement program. Also, the evaluation of the city assets must be completed sooner rather than later. And a great example is the aquatic center. I think we need to really look at our assets, fix them before they become more damaged and cost taxpayers more money. I'll also state that I believe elected officials should be granted the right to have an agenda item at least once a quarter with no restrictions, and at their... And at their leisure, at their pleasure, they can have an agenda item for any reason they wish. I do not believe any board member should serve as a chairperson of any committee, commission, or board. Also, during board meetings, any PowerPoint presentation that is given should be part of our package. We shouldn't be first shown this PowerPoint presentation at the board. We should have it in our package. Also, if a board member has a known conflict of interest with an agenda item prior to the board meeting, they should not be receiving any information regarding that agenda item. If a board member rescuses themselves from an agenda item, they cannot return to the diocese or talk with staff or with board members that are overseeing that agenda item while it is still in progress. Also, city staff is making numerous comments on social media and doing so by identifying themselves as city employees. I brought this up before. I think it's something the city should look at and have a policy that, how city staff members should make their post on social media. Also, the table that is here today should be at all meetings that city staff or the city puts on. We have meetings where people have to stand and I think it's wrong. We have them sit here at the board meetings, they should be able to sit. Citizens should be able to sit at every meeting wherever they are attending. Thank you for your patience.
Other board comments? Anybody? All right. Then we'll stand in recess until 1:30 PM. And we'll do public comment at the end of that, okay? Pardon me?
When do we get, when do we get the signature on the...
Signature?
Oh, next year.
Would you like to add?
We'll do it today if we got it, if it's, if it's been word processed. All right, Chief, go ahead.
Thanks. For the record, Fire Chief and Emergency Manager, so speaking of two hats, it's my emergency manager hat today. Just want to let you guys know that we've been working pretty closely with Public Works and we are prepared for the storm that's out there right now. And we've been getting pretty thorough updated weather reports about what's going on. And we are expecting some heavy rains coming through here this evening and this afternoon, probably through the morning. And then it's going to be turning to, if it gets cold enough, it'll obviously be snow and the snow level's going to drop. So with that being said, we just want to make sure publicly knows that be careful tonight because it's going to be raining, it's going to have some possible floodwaters in the streets that we have. And also just to let you guys know, we have three NDF crews on standby, just in case we have to start sandbagging some stuff. We have about 7,000 sandbags already made, they're already on the trucks and on the pallets ready to be put out. So if we have any issues tonight or even in tomorrow morning, just want to let you guys know that on behalf of the Public Works and myself and the, and the emergency management side, we're prepared and just want to let you guys know that, so.
Chief, where, if, if somebody in the public needs sandbags, is there a place where they can go and pick up sandbags?
They can go get them at the, at the corporate yard off of Bud I. And that's where they're at, they can stop by there. Depending on what time it is too, if we're going to, we'll have to open it up and then we'll have to have people there to be able to do it. We also have them on sandbags. If we have a particular area, we'll bring in crews and we'll start laying them and then we can pass them right off the trucks and then we'll have to refill them, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for keeping us up to date on that. If things change, we're going to come, come back at 1:30. I don't know how long that meeting's going to be, but if things change, feel free to come back and give us a further update in a couple hours. All right? All right? Anything further? We'll be in recess until 1:30.